Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 1st, 2013 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Tim.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next, we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us that's a little bit different than the one we've received in our packets. There's been an addition at 5C and 10A. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved. Second.
A motion is second to approve the meeting agenda for the meeting this evening. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And next, the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to remove 4A, please. Specifically, the regular meeting minutes.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
4G.
4B?
G as in...
G as in girl?
Yeah.
All right. With the exception of 4A, as it pertains to the regular meeting minutes of September 17, 2013, and 4G, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
A motion is second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of the regular meeting minutes of September 17, 2013, and 4G. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then, let's go to those regular meeting minutes. Member Bennett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was in North Dakota this weekend for my aunt's 80th birthday and did not see my packet materials until I returned last evening. So, I reviewed what I could on the road and reviewed the rest last night and today. And I have a... There are a couple of motions where my notes say somebody else made them, and I'm happy to request those changes. But, the change that I am requesting of most significance is on page five, and it was with respect to the motion to grant second reading to ordinance number 2013-09, which is zoning ordinance amendments. After the motion and vote, I expressed my support for a portion of that, of those items, but concerns, specific concerns about the rest, in about one or two sentences. And I would like to read the material that I would like to submit to Assistant Clerk Tim in writing for inclusion in the approved minutes. And it would state, "Member Bennett stated she supported two elements: the proposed reduction in height and elimination of the second-story setback, but that the proposed changes altogether did not make the code clearer, more practical, and more enforceable, in her opinion, as had been her goal, or reduce the possible mass of new construction."
All right. Do you want to move that change?
I move the minutes with that... Or, I move that change to the minutes, yes, to the draft minutes.
All right. Is there a second? I'll second them. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstention?
No, I said nay.
No.
I said aye.
He said aye.
Okay. I didn't hear you. Thank you. All right. We... They're carried in their amended form.
Did you want a motion on the full minutes, because I moved the amendment? Your Honor?
I was assuming that the amendment was embodied in the minutes as a whole, but we could have a separate motion on that.
Then, I will make a separate motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
As amended.
We have a second on that. I'll second those again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay?
Nay.
Carried. All right. Engineering services, this is the recommendation from staff to appeal the FEMA proposed flood hazard determinations. Member Swenson?
I just had a question on the cost and the fact that we're carrying it. We had a FEMA floodplain change back in 2002, was that it?
True.
Where we had a bunch of houses that all of a sudden were in the floodplain. At that time, the city didn't carry any fiduciary responsibilities to trying to get that change. So, what have we paid for to date? And is this in addition, then, to it? Because haven't we already paid $30,000 to date?
Yes. Under this current process, this is an elective process, and the city is the only actor in the community that's available to submit an appeal to the FEMA determination. This is related to the proposal two months ago or so to file the appeal process and...
So, literally, once FEMA changes a floodplain, the citizens who are affected have no ability to file an appeal, and the city is the only one that can do it?
Yep.
And therefore, we... Because we're the only one that can do it, always have to pay for it? Because...
Yes.
I share Member Swenson's concern about the previous action was to approve inquiry that could lead to an appeal. And for that, $30,000 approximately, it's my recollection that about half of that was divided among two neighborhoods. And the result of that inquiry was that 24 townhomes were removed from the floodplain in one of those neighborhoods, another, and there's no further charges for any inquiry with that neighborhood. That there's another neighborhood where I think a total of 10 properties, seven homes, were removed from the floodplain. That all... Those two together made up about half of that $30,000. There's a third neighborhood where the inquiry was half of the $30,000, and now almost the entirety of the proposed expenditures continue. And I'm wondering if there is a way, understanding that it's the city that has the ability to continue to engage or appeal, question the method of analysis, the modeling, but is there a way to recover, as a city, part of that cost from the benefited property owners, since ultimately, the cost will be to private property owners? I mean, the benefit will be to private property owners.
Director Hou, were you going to comment on this?
I was going to say that if you look at this like your stormwater utility fund...
Okay.
Is the people at the top of the hill really don't benefit from the stormwater utility fund, because their water sheds off their property and ends up at the bottom of the hill and potentially floods out people. So, if you look at funding the costs of this FEMA, and this isn't going to... This isn't a fund... The cost for this is not going to fund a total remodel of the creek. I mean, that's... That would be into hundreds of thousands. We're trying to get the FEMA folks to say, "The model is incorrect. They used the wrong assumptions in the model. Please, you know, re-review the model and redo the model at their cost, not at the city's cost." So, that's... But, like I say, if you look at it more for holistic, better quality of life of the city as a whole, that's basically how your stormwater utility fund is set up, just on that aspect alone.
So, does this then have kind of a natural cap?
I would say that we give it this shot here, and then, if they don't move on it, then we back off on it, or else, go back to those neighborhoods and see if they want to fund it further through the city channels.
Okay. Well, then, I'm comfortable, and I'll move this.
I'll second it.
All right.
Because the further analysis, if there's an appeal, if we have to pursue this to an additional stage, can get quite expensive.
Well, that was kind of... That's kind of where I was headed, is are we just snowballing along, and then, all of a sudden, we'll end up funding the appeal also? Okay.
I think this is the second time I've been involved in a change in the FEMA map while I've been on the council. And I think we went through this appeal process before, and the city underwrote the cost for the particular neighborhood or neighborhoods that were involved or potentially affected. I think we did effectuate a change at that point in time, and I'm comfortable with maintaining that traditional policy here, at least up to the next level where we decide, or I guess folks in the neighborhood can decide if they want to appeal or not. Although, I do think we have another potential course of action here, and that's to work with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. And I've talked to our rep from... That serves on Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, and he's indicated that there may be some ability on a part of the Watershed District to enlarge some ponds over at Meadowbrook that would also assist in possibly changing FEMA's mind on what the floodplain map ought to look like and adjacent to Rolling Green, the Rolling Green neighborhood. So... I think it's appropriate to go to the next step. I think we've got a motion, a second, from those that were most concerned. Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay? Carried. All right. Now, we're going to move into the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and we have a presenter here with us this evening, our Commissioner, Hennepin County Commissioner Jan Callison, who has been doing, I think, quite exemplary work for us down at the county. And we've also been serving together on Southwest LRT Corridor Management Committee and the Community Works Committee. So, there's some things that are going to be happening there over the next two weeks that are going to be pretty interesting as well. So, her steady hand is very helpful in guiding folks on those issues. So, Commissioner Callison, welcome, and look forward to your report.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the city council and staff. It's my pleasure, as always, to be here. Thank you for giving me some time on your agenda. I did not bring a PowerPoint. People in the audience will be happy to hear that. No materials to pass out, but I had about six points that I thought you might find interesting. So, I'll run through those, and then, I'm available for questions or comments, as always. I thought you'd be interested in the county budget, and we set our maximum levy about three weeks ago. It's a .98 percent increase over the current levy amount. And that means that if you take the past three years, our average increase in Hennepin County has been .19 percent per year. So, we have been... I'm pretty flat in terms of our levy. The county administrator is actually proposing that our operational budget will decrease slightly, and our capital budget will decrease slightly. But, one factor that we're watching carefully is that we begin employee negotiations, are in the process of employee negotiations this year, for a two-year period. And we have asked them several times in the past to not take any cost of living adjustments. So, they're hoping for a more generous employer for the next two years. So, we'll be watching that. If you combine all of our levies, housing and rail, the proposed increase is 1.6 percent for those three entities. The county assessor has told us that he is seeing this year a slight increase in overall market values. That is the first time since 2007. And he notes that apartment values have increased faster, so you would expect to see some of the property tax burden shift to apartments. We have our truth and taxation hearing scheduled for November 26 at 6:00 PM. That is the Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, the fourth week of November. We have another grant round coming up for our youth sports program. The deadline for that is October 14. There are two components. There'll be money available for facilities and money available also for capital equipment. So, if you've got anything that you think would be appropriate, you might want to keep that in mind. We are terminating passport services at Southdale on November 1. We're terminating at all of our service centers. You may be aware of that. That's a result of changing federal regulations. So, because our pass... Because our service centers issue birth certificates and other documents that people use to receive passports, the federal government has required that we have to physically separate the passport service from the rest of our services and have different staff providing the passports. Means we're going to have to spend more money to change our facilities, more money on staffing, and we decided it doesn't make sense for us to continue to do that. So, people who are traveling and assuming the federal government reopens, there'll be some post offices where you can receive passports. There are some cities that issue passports as well. Wayzata does, Richfield does, a couple of others. So, there are some alternatives, but they will not be available at our service centers starting November 1. Our library hours are proposed to change, and this is a good news story. So, across the system, we're going to be increasing library hours. For Southdale, as I understand it, that generally means that rather than opening at 10, it will open at 9. Grandview might be increasing hours by one or two. It's not a significant change there. But, we also will be keeping our Ask Us and Help Desk hours, or Help Desk, open during all the times when the county libraries are open, so there'll be more access there. This is really the last step of merging the Minneapolis system with the Hennepin County system. So, we had, I think, 15 sets of hours. We'll now have four, and the libraries have been grouped into four different sections, if you will, and the hours will be consistent across libraries of the same type. We, earlier this year, as a county board, passed a wheelage tax. You may be aware of that. That's a $10 per vehicle tax that will start in 2014. Ramsey and Hennepin were the only two metro counties that did not have a wheelage tax. I brought along a quick list of some of what you'll see in Edina because of that. This is money that can be used only for roads and for bridges. And we asked the county staff to give us a five-year plan before we approved it. So, for example, in Edina, you have five intersections in 2014 that will receive a battery backup. So, when the power fails, the lights will still function, and people will still be able to get through them efficiently. Seven Edina locations where we expect traffic signal painting to take place, one location for guard rail repair, and then, we'll be looking at by-two-minute pavement overlay and retaining wall repairs. So, this is part of the county's effort to make sure that our roads are in good condition and our bridges are in good condition. And that brings me to my last issue, which is, I thought you might be interested in what I hear from your constituents. And so, I went back through this past year for constituent contacts. A lot of that is about roads, and that's true across my district. But, for example, frustration with the roadwork on France Avenue earlier this year. Issues around Xerxes Avenue and traffic. Somebody concerned about the service they received at HCMC. You have a resident who's a very strong advocate for more yellow arrows and better timing of our traffic signals. Somebody who suggested that we enter into direct deposit of foster care payments. Timing a pedestrian crosslight at York Avenue in Zetania Lakes. Lighting at France and Park Lawn. Questions about filing a plat. A guardian ad litem concerned about contract termination. So, it's actually a wide variety of issues, but fairly consistent talking about roads. And finally, on Southwest, the mayor acknowledged the work we're doing. That I want to recognize Councilmember Brindle for her work on the corridor work, and then, also, Mayor Hovland, who's been really a leader on the Corridor Management Committee and working really hard to make sure that we find a solution to all the issues that are present along the line, so that we can have this amenity in the Southwest Metro. So, that concludes what I brought with me. As I say, I'm happy to answer your questions or receive your comments. And again, thank you for the time.
Yes. Thank you for the update. Questions?
We had one question at our pre-meeting. What was it that? Member Bennett?
That question is regarding York Avenue beautification. I think with that Xerxes-York corridor, we are really hoping for more partnership with the county. I know, Commissioner Callison, that you were present last week with a... For a meeting with residents on Xerxes Avenue, so there is movement in that direction. I think the safety from the... On the roadway is a serious concern. Also, safety on existing sidewalks, sidewalks gaps, both north and south of Crosstown 62. There's a significant gap from 66th Street to the Metro Transit Center that is now done with construction, or will be shortly at Southdale. So, a very important access point for people on foot, as well as a park and ride. There's also a missing gap north of 60th Street. And in addition, in that York corridor, then, south of... Southdale and south, there are a number of multi-unit residential buildings, a number of senior residential buildings, a number of people who move around the community on foot, and we're hoping for beautification, some help with that. That results both in a more attractive and greener corridor, can help with stormwater management, but also can promote pedestrian safety and that movement without a car.
Is there a staff person who's the point person for these various issues?
Mark Nolan is the city's new transportation planner, and in addition, Wayne Hull, city engineer, working on those efforts. Ross Bitner is the city's environmental engineer, but I think probably the most significant point person would be Director Hou.
And so, you're looking for an update in terms of what the county role has been or the county's plans in this area? Is that my understanding correct?
And what kind of help we could get in continuing to work on it. We have a plan that we are partially funding for France Avenue for three of the intersections and for putting in missing sidewalks. It went out to bid, and it bid too high, so we're going to have to redo it and build it next summer, which will... You'll get more calls in on France Avenue and complaints. But, you know, just trying to make it safe to cross and to walk along it, so...
As you may know, the county adopted its first pedestrian plan recently, which doesn't detail streets like York in terms of what's going to happen, but does say the county is looking... Acknowledges the issues around pedestrian movement and is looking for ways to improve the experience for people.
I saw that.
And this won't... Go ahead, Robert Swenson. This won't be new news for your county engineer, Jim Groob.
Okay.
We've had this discussion over the past couple of years, including the beautification, as Member Bennett calls it, the greening of York. The beautification of those big, wide boulevards in the middle of York Avenue that are primarily weeds at present could be quite magnificent if we do it the right way with the right kind of plantings.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
All right. And, Member Sprague?
Just two more comments on the York corridor. One is that we have either approved or potentially planned over 700 units of new residential housing. So, that segment from 66 to the transit station is going to be very important. In addition, we already have pedestrian issues crossing, mid-block crossing throughout the corridor. Pedestrians don't allow themselves to be funneled to a location here or there, so I think we really could work on enhanced pedestrian crossing strategy as we're working through that on France as well.
We knew we had a problem when the people in the Weston said they got in their car to go across the street to the CVS. And I tried to go across it myself, and I realized why. I thought they were being foolish, and then, I tried to get across it on foot, and they were not.
But, you'll see elderly people with movement devices trying to get across the right-of-way, and it's... It needs to be addressed in a holistic fashion, so I hope we can partner on that together.
And I know county staff has been out checking the timing of those signals, because we've had complaints about whether pedestrians can get across and making sure that the signal timing is sufficient for most pedestrians, clearly not all.
Thank you.
I think there's a continuing issue, too, at 70th and York, as you're eastbound. The way those... The roadway across the way, coming westbound interacts, or going eastbound interacts with that intersection. I mean, if you get in the right-hand lane there, where you typically think you would be turning right, going southbound York, that's also the lane you have to be in to go straight across towards Richfield. And so, there's a lot of frustration, I think, and it's a long light for the people that are moving east to west or vice versa. So, I don't know if there's any way to adjust that... The striping on that intersection, but it's something worth taking a look at, because you see a lot of frustrated people sitting there wanting to turn right, and they can't because they're back in a queue of people that are wanting to go straight ahead, and they're stuck in the same lane of travel. So, the only other question I had was with respect to the youth sports grants. Is there a range of award there that we should know about in terms of the monetary range?
There is, and it depends upon the type of grant that you are requesting. I think I brought the material along if I can find it. Otherwise, I'll send it... Send it to you if necessary.
I think the max is $300,000.
For... That'd be for the fields, for the facilities. The capital grants tend to be in the range of... Oh, here they are. For the facility, it's $10,000 to $325,000. And then, for capital, which is really equipment sort of things, I shouldn't say capital, for equipment grants, it's $1,000 to $10,000.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, well, see you in the morning.
Great. Thank you very much.
And we'll see you next year, or before that.
Well, I'll see you tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, so... Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next matter before us tonight is the proclamation declaring fire prevention week, and I will read that into the record. Whereas the city of Edina is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, and unattended equipment was a factor in one-third of the reported cooking fires. And whereas 57% of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas Edina's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a home fire. And whereas Edina's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Edina residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Prevent Kitchen Fires," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And Darrell, are you going to come forward and receive the proclamation? Do you have any comments you want to make with regard to the proclamation or activities in terms of prevention? All right. Thank you.
We have already been out in the schools delivering our message to this year to the kids. It's, "I can be fire safe." We are scheduled in the month of October for 72 presentations to all preschools and kindergarten classes in the city of Edina, as well as a handful of first and second-grade classes. This brings our message to approximately 3,000 kids. And I'd also like to thank the council for your continued support. This allows us to provide top-notch fire and EMS services, as well as fire prevention and public education to the citizens of Edina.
Good. Thanks very much. All right. Next, we've received an award, and Member Brindle drove down to Rochester. I think Manager Neal was there as well, and I'm going to let Member Brindle talk a little bit about the award that we received. None of us have seen it, but I see you have it in your hand, and this is the...
I do.
Excellent in Community Engagement Award.
Excellence in Community Engagement. The award was awarded by the Minnesota Chapter of the Association of Planners, the American Planning Association, which is, as we were there, there were, I think, probably thousands of people in attendance. And this is planners, transportation planners, city planners, civic engineers, architects, and a whole variety of people. And they awarded a variety of projects happening throughout the state. And Dewtown, I've been busily... Because I did not write notes, I thought I wasn't going to be talking about this, but that's all right. I did write some notes here. Dewtown began as a pilot, and it was brought to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it was funded by their prevention department. And their prevention department, it has... They're charged with managing and spending and putting to good use the tobacco dollars that were awarded as part of the tobacco lawsuit a number of years ago. And so, looking at ways for cities to include health in all their policies, health in looking at how a planning commission works, or a transportation commission works, or how all of the boards and commissions for the city, how the activities in the city, including health and a healthy quality of life weave into the city's vision for what we want for the lives of our residents and also people who come here to work and to go to school. So, this was an 18-month pilot. We did develop a variety of core values and a mission that we feel reflect life in Edina and how health can best weave its way into all of those areas. And the piece I think we're most proud of is the piece we received the award for, and that was the people throughout Edina, in every corner of Edina, who got out of school, work, and of their homes and participated in the various activities that were put on as part of Dewtown. So, I was very proud to receive this award, and it was myself and Catherine Bass representing this project. This project includes the cities of Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Member Brindle? Very good, impromptu...
There you are.
Discussion of the award. And Manager Neal, any comments?[1752.66]
No, I happened to be there in the other room where this was taking place doing a presentation about Southdale that same day. So, we had a lot of Edina interest, I think, in Rochester on this day.
Yep.
Good. Very good. All right, we're gonna move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. There were two items set for public hearing this evening, and one of them has been withdrawn by the applicant. My apologies if anyone is here for the sixty-six-oh-nine Blackfoot Pass matter. I should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting. So, that has been withdrawn temporarily. It's been postponed to our next meeting, two weeks from now, on the fourteenth. And I'm going to need a motion from somebody from council to table this matter, continue it until our meeting on October fourteenth.
So moved.
That a motion is second to continue the preliminary plat request for sixty-six-oh-nine Blackfoot Pass until our city council meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay. Carrie. That leaves us with one public hearing matter this evening, and that is a preliminary plat request for a three-lot subdivision of an existing piece of property called the Warner property in the Rolling Green neighborhood. And Director Teague, you have this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located in Rolling Green, the northwest corner of the city. You see the property highlighted there. You see it's an oversized parcel. It's about three and a half acres in size. The site exists with a single-family home and is a heavily wooded property, mature trees with the driveway coming in off the south side. As with all subdivisions that are over nine thousand square feet, or at least the proposed lot size is over nine thousand square feet, the minimum lot size is established by the median in the neighborhood. And the neighborhood is defined by our zoning ordinance as all properties within five hundred feet. So, that's minimum lot size, lot area, and lot depth. So, the applicant has run that calculation, and the median lot area within this neighborhood is forty-eight, just over forty-eight thousand square feet, lot width one hundred and ninety-two, and the lot depth two seventy-seven. The three lots that are proposed this evening all exceed those, those minimum lot sizes. The lots are over fifty thousand square feet in area, over two hundred feet in lot width, and over three hundred feet in depth. The, as proposed, with the existing house would remain, and that would be located on Lot Two. Lot One, a new driveway would come in, and the applicant has located the driveways so to try to have as minimal impact on the trees as possible. The, a new driveway would be cut in for the existing home, again, located, to try to save as many trees as possible. The existing driveway would serve for the house on proposed Lot Three. The front yard setback is established in this case by the adjacent homes on either sides of the new, of the proposed Lot One. So, the, the dashed line that's indicated here is the average of the home to the east and the existing home. So, the same would go for that south lot. So, you can see the dashed area is the buildable area. It may look somewhat small on this site, but it's actually five thousand square feet in area. Again, here's another look at the buildable area based on our existing setback requirements. So, the request before the council is a subdivision. This is a preliminary plat. If this is approved, they would then come back for a final plat to create three lots out of the one existing lot. So, as I mentioned, this is a subdivision that meets all of our minimum lot size, all of our minimum zoning ordinance requirements. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. This was reviewed by the planning commission at their most recent meeting, and a motion to approve the subdivision failed on a lack of a second, and a motion to deny the request also failed on a vote of three to five. The motion to deny was based on a finding that the subdivision, as proposed, would change the character and symmetry of this Rolling Green neighborhood, and in particular, based on changes to the character and symmetry that would occur as the result of the new home placement in proximity to the homes, the existing homes adjacent. And I'll just quickly show a, as you see, the existing homes here to the east and the south are set quite a bit back from the, the front lot line in both cases. And so, they were, planning commission had some concerns about locating homes so close, so close to those existing homes. Again, those findings are based in our, on criteria that can be considered as part of a subdivision. The criteria is very subjective. And again, this does meet our, our minimum lot size requirements as defined in the code. So, with that, again, staff recommends approval, and then I mentioned the planning commission. Motions to approve and deny both failed. So, with that, I can stand for any questions that the council might have.
Questions for council, Members Frig?
Planner Teague, so, when the application has, has the subdivision, have the lines stayed the same from the, from the initial application until now?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know how many, in this particular neighborhood, do you know how many subdivisible lots are left? I know you usually do kind of an area assessment.
Yeah, there is the, the very large property to the south. That's certainly subdivitable. There may be a handful of others, one or two, but there are, there are others in the neighborhood.
Questions for Director Teague?
I'm not ready now.
All right. Regarding your comment that the criteria under the ordinance for preliminary plat issuance are subjective in nature, it might be good to have our legal counsel explain the legal standards for approving or denying a plat in Edina.
The rules are the same everywhere, Mayor. In reviewing it, considering an application for, for plat approval, you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. What that means is you're taking your ordinances, state law, and you're applying them to, to the facts as presented to you, determine whether they meet the criteria in your ordinance. You're not making policy, you're not writing an ordinance, you're just deciding whether they meet the criteria of our ordinance. If the subdivision meets the objective standards in the ordinance, in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, you frankly lack discretion to deny it, and if it doesn't meet those standards, you lack discretion to approve it. Couple thought, things. The courts have said when you're applying, when they're construing your ordinances, they construe them narrowly, in the least restrictive manner, to allow the property owner to do what they wish with their property. So, if you want, if you're regulating, your regulations must be clear. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather information on whether the facts as presented meet your ordinance requirements. Denial cannot be based upon whether, on neighborhood sentiment or concerns. It has to be based again on your ordinance and the facts, and the objective standards in your ordinance.
Members Frig?
Thank you, Mayor. In issuing approval based on the objective criteria, what type of conditions can be imposed? What's a standard?
I'll give you an example. I'll give you, give you an example. I mean, first, it has to be ordinance-based. A concern that you need to have this condition added to make sure that the standards in your ordinance are complied with. For example, if you have a lot, a big drainage issue, for example, you might want, not in something like this evidently, but you might require a drainage pump, or you might require sewer pipes, or sanitary sewer pipes, or water. Or you can impose conditions to make sure that the standards in your ordinance are complied with. They have to be ordinance-based.
So, those relating to slope and, and drainage?
Certainly. And if you have a standard and you want to impose a condition to make sure that that standard is complied with, then you can impose that condition.
Are there questions for, I have one for the city attorney. So, in Section eight, ten, dash eleven, there are what are called guidelines and criteria for evaluating plats and subdivisions. And it says in there that the council may consider, it's permissive, not mandated, language. And then there's an element, there, there are a number of factors involved, including the one that the planning commission discussed, which was the character of the neighborhood, which to me seems like it's a subjective issue, depending on
I would certainly agree with that.
All right. So, when I look at eight, ten, eleven, are there elements of that that are subjective in nature and some that are objective in nature, or is the, is the embodiment of the objective criteria somewhere else other than eight, ten, eleven?
That is ultimately for you to decide. You, you do have specific criteria on lot size, lot width, and all that other stuff, and on drainage issues, and protection of slopes and that. Those are objective criteria. But something such as symmetry and character of the neighborhood is, in my judgment, very subjective.
All right. Director Teague, I had a question for you. You said that the staff was recommending approval of this lot subdivision request, but you didn't say why. So, why, why is staff recommending approval?
Because it does meet the objective standards. It meets our minimum lot size, width, depth, and area. And also, within that Section eight, ten, there is a condition that talks about steep slopes that exceed eighteen percent. There's just a real small area that exceeds eighteen percent. So, there's no slope issues with this either. So, staff believes that this meets all of our minimum zoning ordinance standards.
Okay, that's helpful. Anything else from council at this point in time? Otherwise, I'll bring the applicant forward. Who's here representing the Warner family? Good evening. And give us your name and address, and take about ten minutes.
Buck, we're gonna give you a microphone if you want to stand in the middle if you have something to show us.
Well, I don't.
Then I would recommend if you're more comfortable.
Then you should work over there.
Then I would work up.
Musical chairs. Anyway, okay. I'm, my name is Charlie Carpenter, and I'm an attorney working with the Warners, who are the applicants. And I'm, for purposes of an address, working with a law firm in Minneapolis, the Fabianski Law Firm, at nine-twenty-second Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'm here with Ted Warner, and then in addition, John Adams, who you know. On their behalf, I wanted to say thank you to each of you for taking the extra time to visit the site, discuss our plans with John over the last, what have you, week and a half. And we do appreciate that attention to our, the details of our plan. At this point, I think that you are familiar with the proposed plat, but certainly if you have questions as we proceed through the meeting tonight, we'd be happy to answer them. Given the discussions that you have had about possible variances and the like, what I thought I would do now is take just a couple of minutes in effort to make clear where we are in the process and what we're gonna ask you to approve tonight. And then, secondly, talk with you about the drawing that John Adams gave you last week, two separate pieces. And I'm hoping that this gives us some structure and avoids confusion as we proceed. So, first, you know, where are we today? The Warners have made the application for the three-lot plat. We understand and believe that it satisfies the minimum standards set by your ordinances without variances, and that is all we are seeking approval for tonight. A quick note, touched on, I guess, here to a degree by, by the city attorney, but pertaining to the standard of approval for the plat, and I thought it important to speak our piece on this, given the, the large measure of confusion that revolved about this issue at the planning commission. As I understood, their, their confusion, it revolved about whether, or what weight is to be given to these general statements, these subjective standards, objective statements, conditions, that are set forth in the subdivision ordinance like this, protecting the character and symmetry of neighborhoods in the city and the like. And those being distinguished from the objective standards of lot size, lot width, et cetera. So, to, to be clear, our position on this, I thought I'd just read two very short, it's about three sentences, statements made by Minnesota courts, which I think follow what the city attorney had said, but they are stated pretty succinctly and might be helpful to you. The first, the quote, "Under Minnesota law, when an ordinance specifies minimum standards to which subdivisions must conform, local officials lack discretionary authority to deny approval of a preliminary plat that meets those standards." So, again, I think that's what I was hearing from the city attorney. And then, secondly, that the Minnesota courts have spoken to these more general subjective statements of purpose and so on that appear in ordinances. And what they say about them is they do not set forth clear and objective standards. That's kind of the key, I think. They do not set forth clear and objective standards a developer must meet to obtain subdivision approval. For that reason, they did not provide a legally sufficient basis to reject a subdivision plan. So, I think, you know, they, those sorts of statements and conditions in your ordinance are not clear and objective. A lot of what you were referring to, I think in that eight, ten, point eleven, if I have the, the site correct, are lacking in, in providing a clear and objective standard. So, all in all, I think we're on the same page with the city attorney and you, hopefully, on those standards. And, and by the way, that this is not to say that we don't think the plat does fit the character and symmetry of the neighborhood. We do think it fits. You know, the point that Carrie noted, and which I think needs to be kept in mind, maybe as you hear neighbors speak, is that the neighborhood is defined in your ordinance as being lots within five hundred feet, not just those next door and those across the street. Within that five hundred-foot circle, there are certainly big lots and small lots, big and small front yards, houses that are close to neighbors and some that aren't. So, you know, I think that's probably why the ordinance is drafted as it is, which uses a mean value for setting minimum lot size, depth, and so on. With a neighborhood as diverse as this, there's a, you know, a broad spectrum of lots and homes, and that mean is an effective way of determining what consistent with the neighborhood means. So, that's it for the first part. That's, that's where we are now. We're simply requesting approval of our three-lot plat that satisfies all the objective standards specified in your ordinance. Then, second part next, is to talk a little bit about the drawing that John Adams shared with you next, last week. And its genesis was what we heard at the planning commission. There, we heard a great deal of concern about the aesthetics of placing houses at the back of the three lots, and heard suggestions that a variance be pursued to bring those, those homes forward. We took all that into account and had our surveyor, Mark Gromberg, prepare a plan, which is the one that John Adams gave to each of you, and he gave it as well to Ms. Polad and her attorney, and the neighbors on the other side of the Warner's property, the ginnous. So, Carrie, is, is it possible for you to plug me in on that?
Stand now over here.
Now you'll need that handheld microphone, Mr. Carpenter.
Yep, thanks. Okay. So, again, I'm, I'm presuming that you've seen this. And I'm not gonna spend a great amount of time explaining it, but simply put, the, the building envelopes that had been to the rear of each of the lots, as shown on the preliminary plat, would be brought forward to this one hundred and thirty-foot front setback line. And we've added, call it what you will, a buffer zone here on the, on this drawing. It's labeled as a conservation easement. But we've added this buffer zone with the intent being that it would provide screening to the that it would provide screening to the Polad home and screening to the Gino's home. And in addition, provide a buffering effect, I guess you might say, between three homes that would be put on these three lots as seen from the street. So adding greenery and buffering, I guess you could call it. So that's what this plan simply shows. I'm understanding that the one hundred and thirty-foot setback line corresponds, at least approximately, to what would have been dictated by the old ordinance, front setback ordinance, which is the average setback of all homes on the same side of the street, which I think would be calculated as from interlock and up to the cul-de-sac up here. Okay? So in order to implement this plan, we would seek a front yard setback for the three lots to that one hundred and thirty-foot line, and which we would couple with, or you could say condition, upon creating a permanent conservation easement to be recorded against each of the three lots. Now, we haven't yet worked out all the exact terms for such a conservation easement, but I would expect that it would probably include the following four elements. The first would be an obligation to plant vegetation and trees in accordance with a landscaping plan that we'd work out with city staff, and which would need to be approved by the city. We'd expect to ask for input on that planning plan from the Gino's as to this portion of it and from Ms. Polad as to this portion of it. The second element of the conservation easement would be a restriction that no buildings be constructed within the easement area. Third, the easement would include a restrictive covenant, a requirement, if you will, that the vegetation and the trees in those conservation easement areas would remain in place. And then, fourth, this would be considered a conservation easement under the statutes running with the land, meaning it would be binding on future owners of each of these three lots and perpetual, or permanent, however you want to call it. So at this juncture, we're asking for, from you, the city council, some guidance on whether you think the neighborhood would be well-served by proceeding with this variance plan, for lack of a better word. A variance, bringing the front setback forward, bringing the building envelopes forward, and creating some buffering and screening by virtue of the conservation easement. Obviously, today is not the day for formal decision on this. But if we could get some direction from you, preferably by a straw vote, but, you know, however, we're then willing to petition the city for the variance. And concurrently with doing that, or going through that process, work with staff and the city attorney to develop this conservation easement draft and work out the terms, and then, in addition, this planting plan that would go along with it. So that's it. In sum, then, we're asking for you to approve our preliminary plat tonight, and then give us some direction, some guidance on this plan. That's it, thanks. Okay?
Swenson, M. Member Sprig.
Yep.
Do you have any interest in extending the twenty-five-foot easement down to the road, specifically on the north one, but potentially also on the south?
Here and here, like this? Yep, I think that John Adams spoke with the mayor, if I'm not mistaken, about that earlier today. And I think that we would be willing to entertain that.
And then, this question is to Director Teague. And could you explain what the process would be to subdivide this property in its preliminary platform and then send it back? Does it then describe what happens now if this were to proceed like this?
Certainly, they would need to make an application for a variance for each of the lots. That would go to the planning commission. The council could approve the preliminary plat this evening, and they have to come back for final plat. I would think that the variances could be taken care of at the planning commission, whether recommended for approval or denial, prior to coming back to the council at final plat. And they both could be handled at the same time by the council.
Okay.
And that's the way we would see it happening, too.
So Carrie, is the conservation easement a condition on the plat approval? Or is that a separate condition with the variance?
They would be conditions of the variance. Because you could approve a variance, they wouldn't necessarily have to build to that variance. But the conservation easement would prevent them from building in that area. So I think it would be tied to the variance.
Well, and it appears to me that you can't have one without the other because the minute you put in a conservation easement that has no ability to build in those areas, then you have to have a building pad that makes sense. So you can't really have the conservation easement without a front yard setback change.
But is the conservation easement within the conforming building pad?
It is.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant. What's the genesis of this particular idea you have here? How did it come forth?
Excuse me. The planning commission input. I mean, we heard more than a few times at that meeting that the neighbors, the planning commission members, all felt that pushing the, well, allowing for three homes to be built at the very rear of these lots would, in their words, I think, or at least some of the words used, would cram them in or appear too crowded, words to that effect. So, you know, we want to do the right thing. And if it means that we need to pull these forward, this is a way to get that done. And just to make clear, I think the conservation easement is necessarily to be linked to the variance. They can't be, I mean, I guess you could approve the variance without the conservation easement, but we're not proposing that that ever happen. So we would bring them through together, coupled. But you can't, we wouldn't be able to put the conservation easement on without a variance because it would eliminate a buildable area.
Right.
Or too much of it. I mean, it wouldn't work.
The reason why I ask that is I thought there was a resident that had some input into this idea, someone on.
Yes, I received a copy of an email.
Mr.?
John, you might have to come up.
You'll have to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
John Adams, and I'm a realtor with Goldwell Banker Burnett, representing the Warners.
And your office address?
Two oh one East Lake Street, Wayzata.
Thank you.
I received a copy of an email from one of the neighbors that suggested to move the houses forward, giving more space between all the houses. And actually, the one thirty number comes from, we calculated out the average front yard setback along the same side of the street, which is how your ordinance used to read approximately three, four years ago. And that is one twenty-nine point five, calculated by our surveyor. And so that's how I came up with the one thirty. And then, the conservation easements, I designed so that the houses to be built in the new building pads would be at least approximately the same distance between the Polad and the Gino house, the new house and the Polad house. They would all have about the same distances between them.
And how did you arrive at the specific geometry of the easement? Because it zigzags, that was a question that had come up.
I think, John, you can jump in as you wish.
It hugs what would be.
Yeah, I went sixty feet from the back. And then I went twenty-five feet from the side. And we are willing to run that twenty-five-foot easement down the rest of each lot line to the street.
John, would you mind going to where he is with the microphone? Because we have the drawing there. I think it'll be helpful to point that out.
Okay. If you look at the proposed lot three, this setback would normally be twenty-five feet from the thirty-foot line.
Yep.
So we took that to sixty feet and drew that line across there. And then I coupled it with a twenty-five foot on the side yard, which would normally be ten feet.
Okay.
And then on the back, in the middle, the house lot, would normally be, actually, you could go back if you were, I believe, let's see, we've got twenty-five feet from the back because we have thirty feet across there. If this house were to get torn down and a new house built or an addition could come back to, on this existing house, to twenty-five feet from that rear line, because it is thirty feet wide. And I moved that from twenty-five to sixty on lot, proposed lot two. And then the same on proposed lot one would have been twenty-five feet, a rear yard setback, I moved out to sixty. And then twenty-five feet from the side yard, which normally would have been ten.
So you customize the easement based on the particular setbacks in each parcel?
Correct. And trying to get house placement, if you look at the Gino house and the Polad house, they're eighty-two feet apart. And I estimated that we'd be approximately the same distance on the new building pad on lot one from Gino's and on lot three from Polad's would be in that ballpark of, say, seventy-five to ninety feet, depending on where they put the house on those two lots.
Okay.
Okay.
Members Swenson.
Follow-up question to Director Teague. The way of calculating setback that they use that we stopped using three years ago, how many years prior to that did we use that method as one of our methods of calculating setback?
You know, I don't know the exact date, but I believe it goes back to the early eighties.
Yeah, I think you're right. So it's a method that we've used in our city for multiple years until three years ago.
Right.
Got a question for Roger Knudsen. Sequentially, the applicant has proposed that they would be here tonight supporting that the preliminary plat be issued with this lot subdivision request approved. And then would consider coming back, when they have to come back for final approval, to come with a plan that embodied what's set forth in this document that Mr. Adams and Mr. Carpenter have in front of them, that the front yard setback request would be at the one hundred and thirty-foot line. We've heard how that was calculated. There's these conservation easements with these various elements. I think there was also some discussion about where the houses would now be sited on those lots that may create privacy, not only for them, but for the existing neighbors. It might be better than the existing pad. So that's a long way of getting to my question of, you approved the preliminary plat tonight. What causes them to actually be legally bound to come back and make those proposals that they're talking about tonight?
Nothing.
And Mr. Adams, you want to comment on this notion of?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I think we are very receptive to direction from the city. And I don't think we could tie an approval of the variances with an approval of the subdivision tonight. But lawyers can, guys. I think you could put a condition that we are requested to apply for that variance. And then you, the city, at the planning commission and council level, would have an option to, at the final plat approval, either approve our plat the way it was approved preliminary or approve it with the variances and the conservation easements.
Could you elicit by agreement what you could not otherwise accomplish with the code as it sits?
Yes, if they agree to something.
If they agree to something, it's a legally binding promise.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything further, Mr. Carpenter or Mr. Adams?
Well, we wouldn't want it, the condition to be approval of the variances in the conservation. We'd want it to be that we were applying for them. And you would have the approval power in a later date.
Did we get that?
All right. Anything further, gentlemen? Otherwise, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of this matter.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Just handed it to Jennifer.
All right, we're going to open this matter up for public hearing. If you were here, or if you weren't here at the beginning of the meeting this evening, we use a lighting system here for public testimony. And when you start to speak, you'll see a green light. And then you've got three minutes. And when you've got thirty seconds left, you'll see a yellow light. And then you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments. So you'll have three minutes total. And you'll get the warning light at the two-minute, thirty-second mark. And then if you wrap up at the three-minute mark, that's what we would like to see. So make sure you give us your name and address when you come forward. And we are ready for public inquiry or testimony. Mr. Rowan, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Tom Owens, and I represent Mary Polad, as well as Mike and Sandy Gano. I'd like to request something that's a little out of the ordinary. And that's a five-minute recess to discuss what's just, some new data that has been obtained and how we would best respond to that. They're the three most affected parties. And this thing has been moving very, very rapidly. And we've been very grateful for your time on the site. But I think I need to check a few of these facts with them briefly.
Okay, Mr. Rowan, and also, when you do come, I think we can do this, talk to council about it. But when you do come back, because you've got multiple clients, I'll give you a little bit more time, too.
Thank you very much.
In three minutes. So people, how would we go about this?
Is there anyone else testifying in the audience for the public hearing? Because if you have two people testify.
I think we will have a more public testimony.
I'm sure there are neighbors who will want to testify.
All right. So maybe what we should do is take public testimony first and then take a five-minute recess.
Actually, that's even better.
Because some folks, they want to testify and have other schedule pressures. So let's do that.
Great.
Thanks for your thoughts. All right. I saw a hand up in the back. Come on forward, anybody that wants to testify.
My name is Jerry Holbert. I live at forty-six, sixteen Mary Lane. We're directly across from the proposed subdivision. And we bought our property in nineteen eighty-one. We built our home eighty-three, eighty-four. When we built our home, the area had covenants and restrictions on all the property within Rolling Green. It was built by Gunner Johnson, and these were within our title. And one of the things is they had an architectural committee. And I don't believe we, having to go to this architectural committee, would have approved of this subdivision that's being proposed right now. Since we've lived there, since nineteen eighty-four, there are approximately eighty-four homes in Rolling Green. Since we've lived there, forty-five have been torn down and redone. And as far as I know, there's only been one property that's had a variance and has been subdivided into two. As we see it, this subdivision, they're already saying that they can't build according to code, that they're going to need a variance and moving the homes closer to the street. So it's going to look really weird. I mean, all these homes are setback. And all of a sudden, you're going to have three homes setting forward. Myself, along with a lot of the neighbors, we have two neighbors right now that are not here because they're gone, would prefer to see this subdivided into two lots, which would make, to us, a lot more sense. We understand the Warners want to maximize the value of their land. And needless to say, they probably feel as though three is going to be. And needless to say, they probably feel as though three is going to be better than two. So, we would just as soon say the codes stay the way they are with no variances. That's all I have to say tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Holbert.
Hello. My name is James Ganley. I live at 4704 Mary Lane Avenue. Leaving aside the legal issues, I think one of the most important things that is, is coming up, and we're sort of left to address the original request as opposed to what might happen here. So, addressing the original request is, is, is significantly easy. It's, when you think about the history of, of, of Rolling Green and how a community is put together and building a character of a neighborhood, that plat, that plating is done with, with, with consideration. It's done to, to balance the size of the plots, the size of the homes, the distance of the homes. What we're seeing with this current request is an accident of mathematics. They've taken a plot, three and a half acre plot, which is, you know, it's completely reasonable that you would want to divide up a three and a half acre plot. Plenty big to do that, that's for sure. But the subdivision is requested right now creates an odd effect because of the strange nature of the, the shape of the lot and then the various setbacks. And I think that's the part of the request that, as, as a neighbor facing opposite this, this property that, that leaves me concerned. This, this is a, this is a request that's done by mathematics, not by, with, with any consideration of the character of the neighborhood. They've, they've got a mathematical requirement that they need to live within, and that creates this odd condition. And the odd condition ends up putting these houses incredibly close together on very large buildable pads and very far distant from the street. The effect being, if you look up at these houses, it's going to be quite difficult to even tell the difference when one stops and the other one starts. They are so big and so far setback that I think that's going to be an odd condition that's distinctly out of character with the neighborhood. And the other odd condition of this is, and I'm not sure that, if you watch the property, you know this, the current owner property is actually facing perpendicular to back of the property. So now you're going to be building a house on either side of it, and we presume facing forward. I'm not sure if they're required to do that or not. But you're going to have houses facing in opposite directions, crowded together and with no backyards. And while we can talk about character and we can talk about what's in the code, that just doesn't seem at all normal, or certainly completely out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, where backyards or side yards are, you know, are commensurate with the size of the houses that they're given. So, when you do consider the character nature, and I'm glad to hear that people went up and watched the property, because now you can actually appreciate how close these things are together. And I think that is, you know, as, as a neighbor facing opposite, that is my main concern, that we end up looking at houses that seemingly are connected in different shapes with no backyards. Where are, where are the kids going to play? Where are the, where are the bikes going to go? Where are the garages going to be located? We don't know any of that right now. So, I think I asked you to consider that when you were...
Thanks, Mr. Callan.
My name is Donna Roback and I live at 18 Mary Lane. Unfortunately, with the way things are numbered, that doesn't mean anything because the house next door has four-digit numbers. But it's right as you enter Rolling Green. We built our house in 1974, so we've lived there in the neighborhood a long time. And the one thing I think that isn't factual that was brought up is that most of our lots are probably eligible for subdivision because at the time, there was a covenant and you could only have one house on perplanted land at the time. So, when they say this isn't going to be an oncoming issue, this will be an oncoming issue as the neighborhood ages and more people come into the area. The other thing I think that is a problem, I know aesthetics are one thing, but the way that Rolling Green is configured, with only three streets leading into multiple other streets, the amount of traffic and the amount of, just even the lawn services that come during the week, there's a constant flow of large trucks. And I think that has something to do with the character and the safety of the neighborhood. And I would raise the safety as a real concern. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Roback. Evening.
Hi. I'm Susie. I'm now in 4812 Rolling Green Parkway. And, you know, we all sort of knew this was going to be a bait and switch, that the builder would come in and say, I want a subdivision and I don't need a variance. And then the moment that he really thought he was getting there, that he would say, oh, the neighbors will be benefited by this. So we really do see it as a bait and switch. But what I really wanted to bring up today is, is that I would like you to table this until you get more facts. The numbers that are presented on the sheet that shows the median lots, I suspect, are not correct. When I compare them to the numbers that were presented at this city council 20 years ago for the same lots, the numbers are different. I'll give you the example that the 8 Mary Lane is here at 657,000 square feet. And back then, it was 807,000 square feet. The numbers are different all the way through. Another thing that is not considered in this numbers and is in the advantage of the developers is that they did not take the lake shared property, which is part of a deed, and incorporate it into their numbers. Alls I'm asking is, whatever way you go on this, is that you have to have correct numbers for your analysis so that whatever way you go, everybody feels it was fair. These numbers created by the developer are not correct. On the page of the median width, there's also numbers that make no sense. On 4700 Mary Lane, they take the, not the width as the long part, which is the Mary Lane address and the way the face, the house faces, but they take the shorter side lot measurement. These numbers need to be addressed. And I'm asking you to table this on this, on this reason. But I also wanted to share with you that we went through this subdivision issue in 1987 in the lot next to me. And what happened was very much the same thing. And the neighborhood talked about the character and the symmetry. And at that time, you had a planning commission that did say is, yes, it is subjective, but you can make it objective. And what they did was, they said is, we're going to give the subdivision, but we are going to respect the character of the neighborhood and we are going to give you not the 10-feet side lot minimum, but we are going to go and have the city measure the average of the neighborhood. And that was, you know, around, not the whole big neighborhood, but the smaller neighborhood, and come up what was the objective side lots, side lots, and to make that part of the subdivision criteria. And I have here the minutes from the planning commission. And Mr. Gordon Johnson, who was a commissioner, he moved for the subdivision, but he said that must maintain side yard setbacks that are compatible with the neighborhood regardless of the minimum requirements of the ordinance. And this was passed. And then it went to the city council, and the city council also supported this. And in the final review, or whatever you give as your report, it says that the proponent has agreed to provide larger-than-required side yard setbacks to ensure adequate spacing between dwellings. It can be a very objective type of analysis. And the way they, the way they got to this...
Ms. Nolan, I need to have you stop. I see the red light is on, so, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Mike Gano. I live at 6 Mary Lane. We moved to Rolling Green in December of 2012. And the primary reason for locating our family there was because of the, the nature of the neighborhood, the, the trees, the low density of homes and how quiet the area is. And, and I think back to the, one of the pictures that Mr. Teague put up, it'd be great if he could put it back up, actually, that shows this clustering effect and how the character of the neighborhood will in fact change as the density would change if you allow three homes to be built, or three homes to be located up there, two additional ones versus the two that we would like to see on that parcel of land. There's another matter that hasn't been brought up yet that I think's worth mentioning, which is, today we're talking about a parcel that could be subdivided into three. Tomorrow, we could be talking about the short property, which is about a 14-acre parcel of land that could be subdivided, subdivided into many lots. If you think about the 500-foot radius rule, taking Mary Lake's neighborhood across interlocking into account and bring that math into Rolling Green, you now are creating the problem that was just addressed by the prior speaker, that you will change the effect and the look and the character of Rolling Green in a demonstrable way. And I don't think anybody who's a homeowner in this property and this subdivision wants to see that, which then begs the question about value. And what does that change to the neighborhood potentially due to property value? And this isn't something that will happen overnight, but over the course of time, it will. And as you just heard from prior speakers, going back into the early 70s and the 80s, you've seen how the neighborhood has evolved, how the, the homes and the density has changed. What's to say that this body, city council, won't be faced with this issue again? The unfortunate part is going to be that those of us who are homeowners now will be negatively affected by that from our property values if the subdivision continues throughout the neighborhood as it could, given the current ordinance. And so, as you think about what's written in the Edina Comprehensive Plan, Section 8, 10, 11, back to character and symmetry, I think it is relevant. And I think it's important for this body to consider those facts as have been stated, not only because of the change of character and symmetry, but the potential change of the value of these properties that may not be felt today, but will be felt over time. And so, let's not make matters any worse and jeopardize property values perhaps even further when there's something that can be done today by this body. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Evening.
Council members. My name is David Evinger. I live at 4 Mary Lane. 4 Mary Lane is not next to 5 Mary Lane. 6 Mary Lane is in between us. Okay? So, go figure. What I want to do...
Would you like a handheld microphone? I think you might need a handheld if you want to point out something in the code, it looks like.
Is this on now? Is it showing?
It is. They're going to, they're going to focus in a little bit better on it, but you...
I want to address this business about whether you have discretion and what is objective and what is subjective.
Jennifer, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
There.
The 500-foot and the width depth is one element you may consider, one. If you look at Section 8, 10, 10, Subdivision 2, it says that in making its decision, the council shall be guided by and subject to the provisions of subsection 8, 10, 11. That's not a may. That is a shall. If you look at subsection 8, 10, 11, where it, where the may appears in that, in that part of it, it says you may consider this, but you may consider other things, but you shall consider Section 8, 10, 11. You must. It's the law. And here, in subdivision, subsection 1A1, our focus is on the shape relative to the size and shape of the other lots in this neighborhood. And it's also on two, the shape, location, and arrangement with the proposed density of this intended use and the density and use of lots in the neighborhood. Those are not subjective descriptions. Those are objective terms. You can calculate it mathematically. I did it. By looking at the shape, the shape of this lot starts off at 150-degree angle. It is reduced to between 40 and 50 degrees. That is mathematical. You can do the math with all the other lots in the area. There is nothing of that severe of a degree anywhere in Rolling Green. When you do three of them, it's three times the problem. Nowhere in Rolling Green are there three such tightly angled lots in one place. When you look at subpart two, the shape, location, and arrangement and the proposed density, that is mathematical. It is as mathematical as the width, depth, and acreage. The density, now five houses in one little area, not three. That's math. That's objective. You can make a decision based upon these objective criteria. I read the cases referred to by council. None of those, he didn't give us the names, but I've read these cases. None of those cases described policy or ordinance language like 8, 10, 11, not one. Nothing is as precise in that case law as 8, 10, 11. 8, 10, 11, that the residents are relying on, is objective. You are legally required to apply those parts just as much as the acreage width and depth. And make the point, where do you pick that up for the acreage width and depth in subpart D? Part of the, underneath the same may.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Evinger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're not going to close the public hearing, but if people want to...
I make a motion that we recess the public hearing for five minutes and allow Mr. Owen to come and speak for his clients, which I think one already has spoken, but one...
All right. This will preserve the right of anyone else to come and speak to the council when we come back out of recess. We've got a motion, a second to go into recess for five minutes. Further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. Opposed, say nay. Carrie?
... Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're not going to close the public hearing, but if people want to...
I make a motion that we recess the public hearing for five minutes and allow Mr. Owen to come and speak for his clients, which I think one already has spoken, but one...
All right. This will preserve the right of anyone else to come and speak to the council when we come back out of recess. We've got a motion and a second to go into recess for five minutes. Further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie? Mr. Rowan, you've got four minutes.
Thank you very much. I'll introduce. I'm a real estate lawyer in Minneapolis. My office is in the IDS Center, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the neighbors, Mary Polad and Mike and Sandy Gano. We would like to endorse the comments made by David Evinger a few minutes ago, and we'd like to call your attention to the petition that he drafted and that it was signed by 50-plus neighbors. We hope you will consider that seriously. We would also like to request that in light of the filing, admittedly late, but I have emailed as of 6:30 to Planning Director Teague as well as the Warner's Council, a request that certain numbers be checked. There is an outlot in the 500-foot neighborhood that has not been properly considered. As of right now, it's about 85,000 square feet, and it has been attributed exclusively to ownership by the Sheedy family. In fact, and I provided the title records, which I picked up at 4:15 this afternoon, consisting of 10 certificates of title indicating that there are separate fractional ownerships of 1/11th in the surrounding lots, and I think that should be taken into consideration. And I know the staff will need a little bit of time to do that. So we'd like to propose that this hearing on the three-lot subdivision be continued so that those numbers and other numbers that have been called into question can be checked. We would also, and I will on behalf of my clients, commit to entering into a good-faith negotiation with the Warner family representatives over the conservation easements, which we would like to clarify, and as part of your conditional language, are for negotiation with the neighbors as well as with city staff. So on that basis, we would prepare to go forward and negotiate and review the next submissions at the planning commission level and their details.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you for your time, and thank you very, very much for all the time you spent on the site with us.
Sure. You're welcome. All right. Public hearing is still open. Mr. Carpenter, hold off a moment. Want to see if anybody else wants to testify. All right. I'm not seeing anybody coming forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie? All right. Let's go right to this issue raised first by Ms. Nellman and also discussed by Mr. Owen that we may have some numerical discrepancies here with respect to the lot dimension data that's summarized, I think, on page 2 of your report, Director Teague. And I think when we were in recess, you and I had a conversation that, I remember Bennett as well, that you'd actually relied on the numbers from the surveyor for the applicant.
Correct.
And where Ms. Nellman got her numbers from, I'd assumed that it was from some surveyor back in that period of time, so who knows what survey is correct. But what's your thought on rechecking these numbers?
Yeah, I think...
Continuing this for two weeks to verify numbers in terms of how it might affect this request for subdivision?
Yeah, we do have to go back and check these numbers. I think the council has two options. You can just continue this. We're in good shape as far as the 60-day, 120-day rule, so if you want to verify those numbers before you proceed, you can certainly do that. Another option would be to add a condition similar to, as you just discussed about the variances and coming back with at least an application for the front yard setback variance. You could add a condition that any approval would be subject to re-verification that all the median lot size requirements are met.
All right. And are we going to verify that? Who's going to verify that?
We would have to, their surveyor would have to come back and verify those numbers. And we'll have to have, there's some discussion. It's not real clear about this outlot that they're talking about, if it's owned jointly by all the surrounding properties. It's also a pond, so there's some question about whether we even include it in the calculation or not. So we'll have to get together with the city attorney and determine just exactly how this should be calculated.
Someone had a question though that got up that probably should be answered, and there was some confusion. Could the three new lots be built according to code? And without the conservation easement and without the front yard setback moving, yes, they all have building pads and they can be built according to code. So there was a question, I think, that one of our residents came up with. There maybe was some confusion, but they can all be built on without that conservation easement and the change in front yard setback.
You know, let's finish up the discussion on that first issue regarding the lot sizes and setback requirements. It strikes me that this is a little bit like relying on the developer's traffic consultant to give you the numbers on traffic studies. And so, we've taken the position that we're going to hire the traffic consultant, and he's going to do the work for the city, and the developer's going to pay for it. So I'm wondering, so that we know we're getting accurate data, so I'm wondering how that equates to this particular circumstance where you're saying, well, to verify the numbers, we just need to go back to the surveyor that the applicant hired. And believe me, I think that they probably paid a significant amount of money to have the survey worked on, and they want it to be accurate too. So I'm wondering what you would suggest from a staff standpoint or from a legal standpoint on how to handle that issue of verification, so that we're confident that the numbers that we all are dealing with are the best numbers we can get.
Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest we have Mr. Rowans and the applicant submit their information. We'll review it. Carrie will review it. And if we need outside help from a consulting engineer or surveyor, we'll engage that person.
All right. Member Brindle.
Just for clarification, it does on these three pages with, one is lot area, one is lot width, one is lot depth. They are from Hennepin County Property Records. So while it comes on surveyor's letterhead, there is an asterisk on each of those pages that indicates that the number is the distance scaled from Hennepin County maps. On width and on depth, it's scaled from Hennepin County half-section maps, and on lot area square footage, it is from Hennepin County Property Records. So I don't want to make it sound, I don't want to make it sound like we're saying that one surveyor's measurement was this and one surveyor's measurement was that because they're coming from county records. As it appears to me, they're coming from county records.
Could be coming from county records, but it still depends on how you measure the county record.
I just wanted to make comment, this came out on the drainage issue earlier with what the staff role is. I thought the staff was to check the math of the developer consultant providing the information if called upon. So in this circumstance, you can check the math of the surveyor, so to speak, to verify that the correct methodology was used and the correct pins or however else it's done. And then we'll make our judgment call from that. Correct?
We can do that.
Could I? May I add something even though it's closed?
Sorry, Mr. Rowan, the hearing, public hearing part of it is closed.
We have a surveyor, Egan Field and Noack.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Rowan.
We have 25 minutes.
Well, so that's another possibility, is that to the extent there are other surveyors that have done some work here, you could look at that work as well. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And be more than willing to look at that work. Can't see Mr. Rowan very well.
Yep.
All right. So, Member Swenson, you had that, that was a good question and a good catch. There are some other ones too that...
Good. I just wanted to make sure that we answered any questions or information that needed to be put out there.
Yeah, I'm going to go through here. Member Brindle.
It was mentioned that there were covenants and restrictions when some of these homes were built. Do we still have any covenants and restrictions in this area?
Well, I don't, there could be some deed restrictions, but some that's...
The short answer is I don't have any idea whether there are covenants and restrictions, but a little longer answer is we don't enforce covenants and restrictions, but I assume someone would have pointed them out if they were there.
Okay, so it's part of a deed?
That wouldn't be a, the city doesn't impose covenants and restrictions.
Standing.
Okay.
They expired in 1986. They covenants and restrictions in our area.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
I know there was one comment that I heard that there hadn't needed to be any other variances in the Rolling Green area, and I know when we had a public hearing on setback on a lot that was just a couple blocks away from this, at the time I remember asking the planning department, and at that point, there'd been a number of different variances, not zero or only one. There had been, do you remember what that number was, Carrie? You and I talked at the time, but I just can't pull it up.
Yeah, I don't recall. Chris Ocker, the assistant planner who was handling that, she handles all the variances through the zoning board.
But I think there had, in the last 10 years, there had been at least seven if I'm not mistaken, so, okay.
This is an issue that's a bit ancillary to the request in front of us, but Mr. Gunnell raised this issue of, over time, you might see a diminishment in the size of the properties in Rolling Green by virtue of a...
Prepare to go forward and negotiate and review the next submissions at the Planning Commission level and their details.
All right, thanks, Ms. Rowling.
Thank you for your time and thank you very, very much for all the time you spent on the site with us.
Sure, you're welcome. All right, public hearing is still open. Mr. Carpenter, hold off a moment, want to see if anybody else wants to testify. All right, I'm not seeing anybody coming forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion of second to close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carrie? All right, let's go right to the, this issue raised first by Ms. Nauman and also discussed by Mr. Owen that we may have some numerical discrepancies here with respect to the lot dimension data that's summarized, I think, on page two of your report, Director Teague. And I think when we were in recess, you and I had a conversation that, I remember Bennett as well, that you'd actually relied on the numbers from the surveyor for the applicant.
Correct.
And where Ms. Nauman got her numbers from, I'd assumed that it was from some surveyor back in that period of time, so who knows what survey is correct, but what's your thought on rechecking these numbers?
Yeah, I think-
Continuing this for two weeks to verify numbers in terms of how it might affect this request for subdivision?
Yeah, we do have to go back and check these numbers. I think the council has two options. You can just continue this, we're in good shape as far as the 60-day, 120-day rule, so if you want to verify those numbers before you proceed, you can certainly do that. Another option would be to add a condition, similar to, as you just discussed about the variances and coming back with at least an application for the front yard setback variance. You could add a condition that any approval would be subject to re-verification that all the median lot size requirements are met.
All right, and are we going to verify that? Who's going to verify that?
We would have to, their surveyor would have to come back and verify those numbers. And we'll have to have, there's some discussion, it's not real clear about this outlot that they're talking about, if it's, you know, it's owned jointly by all the surrounding properties, it's also a pond, so there's some question about whether we even include it in the calculation or not. So we'll have to, we'll have to get together with the city attorney and determine just exactly how this should be calculated.
Someone had a question though that got up that probably should be answered, and there was some confusion, could the three new lots be built according to code? And without the conservation easement and without the front yard setback moving, yes, they all have building pads and they can be built according to code. So there was a question, I think, that one of our residents came up with, there maybe was some confusion, but they can all be built on without that conservation easement and the change in front yard setback.
You know, let's finish up the discussion on that first issue regarding the lot sizes and setback requirements. It strikes me that this is a little bit like relying on the developer's traffic consultant to give you the numbers on traffic studies. And so we've taken the, we've taken the position that we're going to hire the traffic consultant and he's going to do the work for the city and the developer's going to pay for it. So I'm wondering, so that we know we're getting accurate data, so I'm wondering how that equates to this particular circumstance where you're saying, well, to verify the numbers, we just need to go back to the surveyor that the applicant hired. And I, believe me, I think that they probably paid a significant amount of money to have the survey worked on and they want it to be accurate too. So I'm wondering what you would suggest from a staff standpoint or from a legal standpoint on how to handle that issue of verification? So that we're confident that the numbers that we all are dealing with are the best numbers we can get?
Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest we have Mr. Owens and the applicant submit their information. We'll review it, Carrie will review it, and if we need outside help from a consulting engineer or surveyor, we'll engage that person.
All right. Member Brindle?
Just for clarification, it does, on these three pages with, one is lot area, one is lot width, one is lot depth, they are from Hennepin County property records. So while it comes on surveyor's letterhead, there is an asterisk on each of those pages that indicates that the number is the distance scaled from Hennepin County maps. On width and on depth, it's scaled from Hennepin County half-section maps, and on lot area square-footage, it is from Hennepin County property records. So I don't want to make it sound, I don't want to make it sound like we're saying that one surveyor's measurement was this and one surveyor's measurement was that, because they're coming from county records. As it appears to me, they're coming from county records.
Could be coming from county records, but it still depends on how you measure the county record.
I just wanted to make comment, this came out on the drainage issue earlier with what the staff role is. I thought the staff was to check the math of the developer consultant providing the information if called upon. So in this circumstance, you can check the math of the surveyor, so to speak, to verify that the correct methodology was used and the correct pins or however else it's done, and then we'll make our judgment call from that, correct?
We can do that.
Could I, may I add something even though it's closed?
Sorry, Ms. Rowland, the hearing, public hearing part of it is closed.
We have a surveyor, Egan Field and Noack.
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Rowland. Well, so that's another possibility, is that to the extent there are other surveyors that have done some work here, you could look at that work as well, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And be more than willing to look at that work. Can't see Ms. Rowland very well.
Yep.
All right, so, Member Swenson, you had that, that was a good question and a good catch. There are some other ones too that-
Good, I just wanted to make sure that we answered any questions or information that needed to be put out there.
Yeah, I'm going to go through here. Member Brindle?
It was mentioned that there were covenants and restrictions when these, some of these homes were built. Do we still have any covenants and restrictions in this area?
Well, I don't, there could be some deed restrictions, but some that-
The short answer is, I don't have any idea whether there are covenants and restrictions, but a little longer answer is, we don't enforce covenants and restrictions, but I assume someone would have pointed them out if they were there.
Okay, so it's part of a deed?
That wouldn't be a, the city doesn't impose covenants and restrictions.
Standing.
Okay.
They expired in 1986. They covenants and restrictions in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
I know there was one comment that I heard that there hadn't needed to be any other variances in the Rolling Green area, and I know when we had a public hearing on setback on a lot that was just a couple blocks away from this, at the time, I remember asking the planning department, and at that point, there'd been a number of different variances, not zero or only one, there had been, do you remember what that number was, Carrie? You and I talked at the time, but I just can't pull it up.
Yeah, I don't recall. Chris Ocker, the assistant planner who was handling that, she handles all the variances through the zoning board.
But I think there had, in the last ten years, there had been at least seven, if I'm not mistaken, so, okay.
This is an issue that's a bit ancillary to the request in front of us, but Mr. Gannell raised this issue of, over time, you might see a diminishment in the size of the properties in Rolling Green by virtue of the 500-foot radius rule that we use lapping outside of the boundaries of the Rolling Green neighborhood, which is similar to the problem we had in Blackfoot Pass. Is there, strike that, could we have, could we create ordinances that were neighborhood-specific at some point in the future that obviously wouldn't be relevant to this matter, but would be particular to, peculiar to a particular neighborhood in the future? Pick Indian Hills, for example, pick Rolling Green, you know, pick your neighborhood. It's a little bit unique.
You could try to define neighborhood to include other characteristics that you think are appropriate, but the ordinances apply citywide. But you could have-
Mayor, are you referring to the neighborhood boundaries map?
No, I'm referring to the 500-foot, the definition of neighborhood and how it's defined in the code. Member Bennett?
It's my understanding that we could, we could, for instance, say, instead of 500 feet neighborhood, we could say within the same plat, or platted at the same time, that we could make it specific in that way. It's also my understanding, thanks to information that state law requires 350 feet, we give notice to 500 feet as a way of trying to reach out and inform more people in the community. We also use that 500 feet as an evaluation. We don't need to use that 500 feet, that's something that we've chosen to do, and I think that's, as much as we've defined neighborhood character in an objective way, that's how we've done it, is when people mention size and shape of lots, we don't have anything objective that defines what shape, what constitutes a variation in shape, but we do have something objective that defines a variation in size, and that is referring to that median. And I recall Commissioner Fisher remarking at the Planning Commission that he doesn't recall working with it. I think his, the fact that he doesn't in his nine years of service on the Planning Commission recall working with it, I think means it has worked to date. It doesn't mean that it's going to work going forward, but it has worked to date. I think certainly the other matter that has been continued to October 14 raises that question of whether or not we should be still looking with simply the 500 feet or whether we should be referring to areas platted at the same time, as we know that there could be some real, especially when there's a major street that's crossed or homes that back up, the 500 feet continues regardless. The only boundary it ends at is something like France Avenue, the city boundary.
All right, good, thank you for that comment. Roger Knutson, David Emigur raised an issue comparing 810.10 subdivision two language to 810.11 language. In 810.10 subdivision two, it says, "In making its decision, the council mandatory language shall be guided by and subject to the provisions of subsection 810.11," and then when you go, of course, to 810.11 subdivision one, it says, "The commission and the council may consider, among other matters, the following." And then that, of course, included the character of the neighborhood. How do you reconcile the 810.10 language subdivision two with 810.11 subdivision one language?
8.10 what?
810.10 subdivision two, it's a fourth to the last line. "In making its decision, the council shall be guided by and subject to the provisions of subsection 810.11," makes it seem like it's mandatory, and then when you get over to 810.11, it makes it seem like it's permissive. But they're called guidelines.
Yes.
And he just told us we had to be objective and guidelines doesn't seem like something that's objective by its very nature.
Not a word I would have chosen to put in an ordinance, let's put it that way.
Pardon me?
It's not a word I would have put in an ordinance.
All right, so what's your, what's your, what's your, what's your answer as to, what's your answer as to the reconciliation of that language?
Guideline. You may consider-
Regardless of whether it's 810.10 or 810.11, they're guidelines?
It's called guidelines, 810.11, and it says, "You may." So you shall be subject to the guidelines, it says, "You may."
Is it a moot point if case law has modified the authority to act within those guidelines?
You have to have objective standards, if you find, so that's your decision to decide whether these are objective standards, but they have to be objective standards.
So if it's shall adhere and it's a subjective standard, then we can ignore the shall because of the case law?
There's some language in 810.11 subdivision three, and I'm going to paraphrase it here, it says, "The council shall specifically and especially consider the following matters: A, whether the proposed plat or subdivision complies with the policy's objectives and goals of the comprehensive plan." So what's your interpretation of that language? Is that an objective standard or subjective standard?
What the court has told us is that the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to provide guidance in drafting your ordinances, your subdivision ordinances, your zoning ordinances. So it's the substance of what's in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance that is controlling.
Not the comprehensive plan, which is a guide?
That's correct.
All right, let's have a little discussion on this issue. I think-
Somebody else raised a question of whether, Roger, whether shape was an objective measure.
No, thank you.
It's not defined in the ordinance.
Right, that is really a judgment for you to make, whether you think it is objective or not.
But you've given us legal opinion on the ordinance, so why can't we request that here with respect to the shape language?
I don't, I don't want to, I don't think it's objective.
Director Teague, did you take into consideration the shape of these proposed lots after, if a subdivision were approved, as part of your consideration that it met the objective criteria?
I looked at it just generally. There are pie-shaped lots within this area, and what's proposed here is three pie-shaped pieces, pie-shaped lots. I didn't measure angles or any, I didn't go that far.
Are you saying that if there were not pie-shaped lots, that it wouldn't meet the criteria for?
No.
Okay.
I just, again, because those are guidelines, I looked at it, but I didn't think it was enough to change my recommendation.
Do you want to go first?
Member Bennett?
What this brings really strongly to mind is conversations we've had about cities with multiple zoning areas, and we have a single zoning code that applies to lots and homes throughout the city, even though we know that there's great variation between neighborhoods and sometimes even great variation within neighborhoods. And one, it's that great variation within the neighborhoods, I think, that's kept us so far with R1, everything's R1. And with R1, anything greater than a 75-foot lot width, the side yard setback is 10 feet, for example, that's just one. And when we start talking about neighborhoods that have very large lots in them, there's a question about whether or not that is adequate, and while it doesn't necessarily speak to exactly what we're talking about this evening, I think it does speak to part of it, which is the issue raised about what's going to happen going forward. And I think some of the conversation that was had at the Planning Commission, some of the planning, a discussion at our work session this evening is about how we not only need the code review that we're undergoing right now, that's going to standard ours that code, put it online, working with a codifier, we really need an examination of our zoning code and work on our zoning code that I think is beyond the capability of our very able and very committed planning commissioners, who've been working a long time on it, very diligently, but they're all volunteers, they're now operating as a zoning board of appeals, they're meeting twice a month, we're meeting long hours, and I think we, I think what we're talking about evidences that, again, it doesn't necessarily offer immediate relief to people, but I think it does speak to that issue of what's going to happen going forward, is a side yard setback of 10 feet really adequate when you're talking about a lot of 50,000 square feet, for example?
I agree you can fashion a rule that tries to reflect the neighborhood character better, but it will still lead, in some instances, to subdivision. You can't stop a person from a reasonable use of their land. You have to balance, of course, that with trying to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, but that also becomes very subjective. So it's hard to strike that balance, and it's even more difficult, to your point, in a city that has so many different neighborhoods with so much different topography and lot sizes and-
Right, in other cities that do have the multiple zoning codes, what they tend to apply to is lots by size. I don't know if that means for, does that mean that you can have an R1 and an R2 lot side by side? Can you do that and simply do it by lot size rather than by area of city?
You get into the issue of spot zoning, that doesn't particularly concern me. What concerns me, if there's a rational basis for what you're doing, you can have an R1 next to something else, sure.
Well, in addition to other things, we'd like that looked at, and do agree with the property rights analysis, Members Bragg, that I think you were going toward. I also agree that when there is a question of the reliability of factual information, I think we need to resolve those questions before we proceed to a final decision.
So my question is that-
Member Swenson?
Because the lot areas are at a minimum of 2,200 feet over what is currently required, and the depth is 60-plus deeper than what's required, and the lot width is between 10 to 90, are we comfortable with a preliminary plat decision tonight based on the fact that the median lot area width and depth be confirmed as accurate? Because it's not like we're talking about a foot or two. We're talking about a lot of space there already larger than what the median was figured out, so.
I am because I believe it's otherwise conforming based on my lawyer's opinion of the scope of my authority and review. And so if I'm, if I'm narrowed to certain limited objective criteria on a, with a subdivision with conforming criteria, then yes, I'm comfortable, and I see the, what you're talking about with, it would have to be a major discrepancy to cause a different result, so why not go forward with the approval and then check to make sure that the data is accurate?
Well, the approval would be based on-
It's a condition.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think Mr. Ganley kind of set forth the essence of the issue that we've all discovered both through the Planning Commission efforts and our own individual visits there, and that is, you've got a piece of property that is legally divisible under the code, it's code compliant in terms of its proposed subdivision, but it tends to cluster all of the proposed houses up there on the top of the ridgeline. And there's already two up there within 84 feet of each other that are at the back of their properties, and they were built after Mrs. Warner had her house, or had lived in her house for many, many years. And now we'd have a situation where there would be two more added to that mixed clustered on top of the hill. And even though that looks like a legal subdivision, under our objective standards, under our code, it doesn't feel quite right to anybody, including the applicant, I think. And so I think that's why they've come, and we've also wrestled with, at least over the weekend since getting the supplemental information about whether or not there's some level of objectivity and sense in using the old methodology and having a variance request proffered that would put these houses separate from each other and more separated from their neighbors, cited on those parcels, those three parcels, in a way where you'd have conservation easements protecting the adjoining properties with the same level of growth that's there now, considering sort of natural attrition of that, of that growth of those woodlands, but it seems to me like, from a purely objective standpoint, we're going to end up with a situation that isn't really good for anybody. And if we, if we take a little time and go back and look at this in a little bit different way, which is what Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Adams have proposed, assuming this gets approved, we end up with a situation that's a lot better for everybody involved. And there's conservation easements down to Merrill Lane, both adjacent to the Polad property and the Gannell property. There's the vegetation levels that are maintained to insulate them, and I think we've all been out there and seen the level of insulation that exists now, especially over on the Gannell side, on Mary Polad's side, it's, it's pretty well-maintained and manicured, so, but nonetheless, when you look at where the 10-foot marker would be, it's pretty close to a property line, and the 25-foot conservation easement would mean a lot, and if the houses were pushed down the hill a little bit further, would also get rid of that clustering effect. So it's a, it's a conundrum. You, Mr., Members Bragg, you were going to say something?
I just was, you know, you're talking about the conservation easement, I think that is an enhancement to the lot, the lots being subdivided long-term. I believe that that will be well-received by the future homeowners to have that buffer. So this, that's one area where there's some aligned interest with both the developer and the adjacent neighbors.
When you walk on Merrill Lane and look up the hill through the woodlands, across from where the Holberts live, and it's, they're tremendously large pieces of property, well in excess of an acre a piece, as proposed for subdivision. And there, you know, and as I drive through the neighborhood over there, there are a lot of houses that are much closer to the street from a setback standpoint than these would be at 130 feet, plus they'd be up in the woods. So I think there's a potential benefit there. So, you know, heeding the advice of our city attorney that the objective standards of our ordinance have been met, it's, it's kind of swallow hard and say, okay, but, you know, the better outcome is something that moves those, protects the neighbors better and moves those properties down the hillside a bit. Member Bennett?
Question about how it is that we're going to proceed to a verification of the numbers, because I think, for me, that's the big question that remains. If we're making a decision based on objective information, the objective information should be accurate. And how is that determination going to be done and how long will it take?
These calculations are not easy to do, it takes quite a long time, from what I hear from the surveyors. If you'd like the city to engage in a completely new consultant, we can certainly do that, but it may take, I don't believe we'd be able to come back within two weeks, I would think it would probably take a month.
Well, when would the applicant typically come back for final plat approval?
They have-
What's the spacing?
Yeah, they have a year from the date of a preliminary approval.
Yeah, but we also have a number of days that we have to act on this.
If you act on it- You, if you act on it this evening for the preliminary plat, that would be final action. As far as the preliminary plat goes, they have to come back for the final...
Yeah, they can't, they can't, they can't have, they can't sell it and they can't start building on it until final.
Correct.
So, and I would, if I, I, what I would like to do is have preliminary plat conditions, and one of them obviously is verifying the survey. The other one, though, is working on the conservation easement and the, and the setback, because I agree with Mayor Hublin that that is the best solution for this. You know, if you look, if you want to call, talk about character and symmetry of the neighborhood, most of these homes, when I drove my daughter around this neighborhood again yesterday to explain what I was, you know, this lot, and the majority of the homes have manicured lawns, as you say, one of the traffic issues is people coming in with trailers and their lawn mowing crew. It isn't the look of this particular thing. Yes, there's some beautiful trees around, but this lot actually is very different than the majority of the lots. You know, even Mrs. Polad's house is mowed regularly, where I would say you would kill your lawnmower on the acorns on the Warner site if you tried to mow it regularly. You can't. You could maybe get a little, you have a little bit of lawn at the top and that's it. So this, this lot is very different looking than the other lots around it, in many ways. And because it's different looking, I don't think necessarily that I would say that it has to always look the way it looks. I don't think that's a restriction that should be placed on this lot based on all the other houses around it.
We got another question for the city attorney. What kind of agreement could we elicit from the applicant if we determined that we were going to proceed with a preliminary plat approval? So that when they come back, they have an, when they, they have an obligation in the interim before they come back for final plat approval, they would, they would have to go through this variance process, work on conservation easements that are consistent with what they showed on their map, plus adding that 25-foot conservation easement running down the Polad and Gano property lines all the way to Merrill Lane. You know, how do, how do we elicit that promise and have it be legally enforced?
The applicant has already agreed to it, so it's wording along the following line. The applicant shall apply for front yard setbacks for all three proposed lots. And provide conservation easements over the areas indicated this evening.
I think the citing of...
In conjunction with the, with the variance.
Go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
In conjunction with the variance.
All right. There was also an issue that we discussed, which was a building pad placement that would be adjusted based on the fact that the 25-foot easements would be put in place to protect those potential three new lots from a privacy standpoint, but also protect the existing houses to the extent possible from a privacy standpoint. So there's some balancing that would need to go on there.
Right, that's, as I, my understanding is the conservation easement will create that balance.
Would drive that.
You can't build on the conservation easement, and the conservation easement is established based on the separation of the current two homes behind this property.
The setbacks still from the line, though.
Yeah, I still think you need to have an earnest effort on the building pad. I'm not sure the conservation easement alone would do that, but, Mr. Carpenter?
Well, I think, I thought was that it would, because you're, it would be a contranchal...
And a real covenant, an obligation on the part of the owner not to build in the, in the...
Boy, it's, yeah, obviously you're not going to put any building in the conservation easement area, but, I mean, you, that, that also, that doesn't answer the question of where a house ought to be cited on the property that's not, portion of the lot that's not subject to the conservation easement.
Are you worried that the three homes themselves will be too close to each other?
I'm worried about that, plus I'm worried, I'm concerned that we try to maximize the location of the building pad for each of those lots in a way that it protects the adjoining existing property owners as well, to the maximum extent possible.
Well, to me, that's what the conservation easement does.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's obvious, or I'll just say it, but, I mean, what I would see as being the resulting building envelope, meaning the buildable area, right?
Correct.
Taken for an example, Lot 1 is going to be, you know, out, within the setbacks, simply put, and further constricted by the easement. So, you know, this would be the building envelope, the buildable area for this lot. It can't, there would be no, you know, the conservation easement itself would prohibit, and the city, I would see this conservation easement written so the city can enforce it, and it would prohibit any building within that conservation easement. So it's like, it's like a setback.
Mayor, do I, what I think I hear you saying is you're looking at a setback from the conservation line and not from the property line, is that...
Correct, correct. Within that, within that allowable building pad, it seems to me that there's a maximum building location for, let's say, hypothetically, a 5,000-square-foot house.
He wants to preserve the backyard space or something.
That protects the new property owners from each other, or gives them maximum privacy, and also protects Gano's. I'm screwing up their house name, I know that.
Well, I think...
And Mrs. Polad.
Yeah, I mean, John, John was sort of the architect, but, but my understanding is that's exactly what we had intended the conservation easement to accomplish, so that if a house, you know, were located right here, that amount of buffering would still be adequate. And I'm not, I mean, is that addressing what you're getting at?
I'm with you on that.
I'm not entirely sure, but, and, you know, a house might be located over here or what have you, I, you know, I don't know that, but it would, but we're getting the separation from the existing neighbor's house expanded by virtue of this conservation easement width.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how much, how much more critical it is to define, and I'm not sure it's that easy to define, where exactly within this envelope our building pad would be, or that it necessarily matters.
Well, if you're down by the, if you're down by the setback line...
Yep.
Established at 130.
The front one, yep.
Maybe the answer is that regardless of where you're on the building pad, or in that, in that piece of property, the building pad's going to be about the same because that slope's about the same all the way through that pie-shaped lot. So maybe I'm making a mountain out of a molehill, but nonetheless, you know, and I think that's a consideration for Mr. Warner, Mr. Adams, in going to sell these lots, or a builder that buys them that's going to cite the property, the houses on those lots. They're going to have customers, they're going to be paying a lot of money for these pieces of property, and they're going to want as much privacy as they can have...
Well, that's what...
From each other and from the street.
Yeah, one thing we never really talk about is, you know, the market is a positive force here. People like a nice property.
Their alliance, their interests are aligned.
They're going to pay a buck for this, and, you know, mistakes happen, I suppose, but these people are going to hire, you know, big-time architects, big-time builders, and you're probably somewhat protected, maybe informally, but by those market forces.
I suppose another thought is that regardless of where you would put the building pad on a particular lot, it's going to be a lot better than having them clustered up at the top of the hill on a... Yeah, Member Brendel.
I'd sort of like to sit here and listen to everybody for a while. The way I see it is Suzanne, Suzanne Nellman mentioned bait and switch, and I, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate characterization of what occurred. I think it was really a discussion at the Planning Commission that encouraged the idea of a conservation easement. I think it was a letter from a resident that encouraged the houses to be brought down on the lot. I think that's where some of those ideas came from. As you look at, we have a diagram of a variety of properties. Some of you are sitting here. Your homes are anywhere from 49 to 45 to 25 feet from the street. That's your front yard setback. And so we're looking at a front yard setback on these three lots of a minimum of 130 feet. The, when we look at the diagram that's still sitting on the desk, the conservation easement provides that buffer area, and it really does define the buildable area in each of the lots. The, the home on Lot 1 will face Merrill Lane from the vantage point of where it is on Lot 1. So they are, they're really, as I see it, the three houses will not look at each other. They'll all be looking different directions toward Merrill Lane. So the angle of the lot would, of that particular lot would define the angle of how that house sits in its buildable area. When you put that up on top, and if we didn't have a conservation easement, if the homes were put in a location that complies with code, A, they're close together, they're really close together up there, but B, they're much more facing the same direction because the angle is different. So it just seems to me that it's, it's more neighborly where they would be in, in, with the, with the, with the buildable areas of these three subdividable lots. I don't like subdivisions. I, you know, I, I go out and I look at these beautiful spaces, and it's not my favorite thing to do, it's not my favorite thing to think about. But if we have and allow subdivisions, then you got to think about, okay, does this, is this reasonable? Is this using our code? Even though there's a variance involved in this, is it reasonable? Does it make it a better piece of property to push that house down toward the street? Does it make it a better piece of property to protect that back area of the property? I think it does. I think both, both those situations are positive for me. The houses can be positioned where there will be a backyard. The houses can be positioned where there's going to be a generous front yard. So privacy is, is going to be of the utmost, but I think there are a lot of ways to do that. Coincidentally, as we met with both John Adams and with Mary Polad and Sandy Gano at, at Mary Polad's house, several of us had, had similar ideas in our conversations about how to make this the most workable, how to make this the most private, for both the Ganos and for Mary Polad. So I, I think we've thought through this, I think we've done a lot of homework on this. This is where I am on it. I appreciate all of your comments. You are an astute group of people who have really helped me to see the angles and to see what's possible here. I'm sure there's more to come, but as far as I'm concerned, I would accept the preliminary plat with the conservation easement, 25 feet all the way down to Merrill Lane, with the setback minimum 130 feet. So that's where I am.
I'd like to turn it in motion because I'd like to add the verification, and there were two specific things on the, the survey from Groundberg and Associates that were questioned. One was the ownership of that one outlot and whether water included, and it sounded to me like, Roger, you were going to need to give us an opinion on that, correct?
I will review that, yes.
And then I think Mrs. Nellman had a question about a previous survey of another lot, so specifically that one has to be checked to make sure that it was done accurately. And if she has any others, I'm sure she has a list back there that she can probably give us, and we can copy and give back to her.
I think that was a short property. She's such a big disturbance.
Okay. So those would be, that would be my addition to...
To the resolution.
To the resolution. Member Bennett, did I miss something?
Well, the, I have been working on some numbers here, and the lake is not a small consideration. It's 85,947 square feet, according to Director Teague. Divided by 11, that's 7,813 square feet per, for each property. Looking at the, just the lot areas, because that's what it would apply to, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of the properties of the 11 are larger than the median, and 1, 2, 3, 4 of the properties are smaller than the median, and 1 is the median. So there is a potential significant change in what constitutes the median. If you, there was discussion before about how close these lots are to the median, and they are, they're within 2,000 square feet. But if we're talking about an additional almost 8,000 square feet to 11 lots, that's...
If the decision is that they have to be included, or how they get included, and then this doesn't comply, then it doesn't get preliminary plat approval, because the preliminary plat approval is conditioned on the fact that it meets the median.
I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with the objective standard. I think this has been a good learning experience, both about how the code works and where we may want to work on it in the future, or need to work, I think, more strongly. I also think that the issue that I heard in the testimony before the public, before the Planning Commission, and heard repeated tonight, is about the clustering. That is the most significant change, I think, to neighborhood character with usually more spacious intervals. There were already some closer, more, more closely built homes on the top of that hill, but this would make it almost like a village, I understand. And so to me, the solution of the, of the variances with the conservation easement is a solution that would seem to address both the concerns about the clustering. 130-foot setback still preserves a lot of space for woods and the...
Whatever they choose in front of their homes.
Right. So it, so it allows for backyards, it allows for front yards, it does seem to be a good solution, and I agree with Member Brendel, it doesn't seem to be a bait and switch, it seems rather to be a solution that was arrived at in, in listening to the neighborhood and trying to, and in particular, the one resident who came up with the idea, but also in listening to the testimony and to listening to the individual conversations and coming up with something that I think responded. So I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with a future consideration of variances. I think the people are trying to problem-solve here, but I am, my, my big concern remains that, again, if we're relying on objective criteria, I want them to be factual and accurate.
Yep, and...
I'll second the motion.
My motion was conditional on that it met the median.
I'll second the motion, and I too am grateful that the interests have organically converged in this, in the subdivision.
Other comments? What about the, Roger, what about the agreement to be entered into with the applicant? It's not a condition for approval of the plat, but it is part of, part and parcel of potential approval here. So how do we, how do we build that into what we're doing?
Well, I would base it, at least from my motion, on their...
On their, on their, on their representation that they would do this.
And their map. They've already given us something, you know, it needs to be...
That they, they apply for the variances that are, that were discussed...
Based on this.
Roger said, based on the information provided this evening.
Yep.
Okay.
Could we express that as we do a materials board, for instance, that you would say, apply for variance and easements as presented to City Council on date?
I would take that change, I would accept that change in wording. Do you accept that change in wording?
Second.
All right. Anything else we need to clear up? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Carrie, thank you, everybody. Really fascinating issue. All right, we're now on to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council with respect to any particular matter not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one coming forward. We'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the reports and recommendations portion. And the first matter there is the resolution accepting various donations. We have a motion.
Some motion.
Second, we got a motion, a second to approve Resolution 2013-85, accepting various donations, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay? Uh, Carrie. All right. This reporting period, we've got, uh, some real generous donations to the Adana Art Center and also to the Adana Fire Department and the Adana Braemar Memorial Fund for future golf course equipment. Uh, back up to the Art Center donations for a moment, um, uh, some very nice donations from Ruth and Mark Valgeme, Elizabeth Eisenbrey, Linda Masika, our former colleague, and Bill McCabe and his wife Deborah Newger. Very generous. Thank you, folks. And those, uh, donations will be posted on the website. Next matter is the, uh, Resolution 2013-77, a matter we had in front of us a few weeks ago, the Silver Oak Development, which is a proposed addition to the, um, Saltdale Medical Office Building. And, uh, Director Teague, you wanna take that from your seat over there?
I will. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, you had tabled this, this item at your last meeting and asked the applicant to come back to address some issues, including the specifics of the loading area, adding some sidewalks, um, adding landscaping, uh, public art, and particularly the ramp facade. So with that, the applicant has submitted plans to address those, and they are here to present them to you this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Director Teague. Welcome, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and the council members. My name is Paul Ranky, Silver Oak Development, 7073 46th Street North in Oakdale, Minnesota. Pleased to be here again tonight to, um, address some of the issues that were raised by the body last, last meeting. Uh, we also have members of our design team and project team here again, Collaborative Design Group. You hear from James O'Shea, the architect, Craig Milkert, uh, structural engineer, uh, members from the Landform Professional Services, civil engineering, and, um, also in attendance tonight is a representative from IRET Properties, Ted Holmes is the Senior Vice President Finance. This is a representation, just to, to, to display to you about the importance of this project and the significance to their portfolio and to the community. And with that, I'm gonna ask James to, uh, share his thoughts about the solutions to the concerns.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Ranky. Mr. O'Shea, welcome back.
Well, welcome. I'm glad to be back. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is James O'Shea with the Collaborative Design Group, 100 Portland Avenue South, Minneapolis. So, I thought we'd spend, we'll try to make this a little faster, but I thought I'd spend a couple of minutes just refreshing you where we were and where we came from. Uh, we came to you two weeks ago for site plan approval on our project. It's a sixty thousand square foot office building and then a four-story, a new four-story parking ramp is what, is the, primarily the description of, I guess, the project, let's say. So, to get started, the first thing we did, I think we supplied, you should have them in your packets, and we've provided a legend this time around to show you where we're addressing each of the conditions, and I kinda wanna just go through them and, and check them off, so as to speak for you. Um, so, um, and they may not be in a, in complete order because there are some things that we'll be addressing later in the presentation, let's say. But one of the first things was, uh, that taller trees be planted in front of the loading area. As you can see on the loading area, um, we're holding that out and we'll show you a couple of different schemes on that, because I think what we wanna do is kinda engage you guys in that decision with us a little bit. But, uh, we've intensified the plantings quite a bit along 66th as well as, and directly in front of the loading facility, let's say. So that was, uh, the first one. We'll show you some renderings of that as well. Um, the second one is the driveway width. I think, you know, our plan on that primarily would be to work with, uh, Wayne and engineering here to kinda get that finalized. I mean, um, we're fine with doing whatever everybody thinks we, you know, works best, but we just wanna make sure that we can get the vehicles in there and get everybody to access the loading area and the garage and the turnaround out front here. Seventy-five bike racks, we spread those out. In the last meeting, I pointed out to you, we had a kind of a commuter bike stall inside the parking garage, then we had another bike area here for, uh, people to come to the new facility. We've also added bikes over to the 6525 building, the turnaround there. And then we've put a bike rack down here off of the south of the 6545 with the new sidewalk that you guys had referred to, uh, which is a later item. I think that is item number eleven. We'll skip twelve for now. On fourteen, I wanted to kinda correct something on fourteen. I think it was noted that those were permeable pavers. Our intent would be to follow the city standard. I don't think your current city pavers are permeable, so it's not really a permeable paving, it's just a paver.
I remember when the mayor said that, and I wondered about that.
Yeah. So we're gonna go back with the same detail.
Did I talk about permeable pavers? Yeah, on the, and, and we were talking about the, the perimeter sidewalk.
Yep, yep. So, what we do have that is permeable
I may have, uh, repeated what you said.
Yeah, well, I was talking about
Regardless.
The permeable, the drive is permeable because we need it
We're off the permeable pavers, okay.
For stormwater management.
City standards, what we're talking, all right.
Yep. You got it. I think we're on the same page here.
You're keeping the width the same, that's the big
Yes, yes, and putting back the same pavers per the city standard detail.
All right.
Um, the next one we'll skip, add public art. We've always intended for this central area to be kind of a central plaza. In some schemes, we showed it as kind of an artwork piece, and in some other schemes, you might've seen a tree, but we formalized that. So we're saying we, we would commit to putting some public art in that central turnaround area.
See, your walkways are colored concrete as well
Yep, they're all colored concrete now, so we've got that straightened out too. They always were, but we've kinda defined it better in the rendering, so you can see. Before, we showed them all the same.
What is the sidewalk with the added sidewalk? It looks like the one to the east and the west are different widths going north.
I'd have to ask, Reed, Reed's gonna get up here and take you through the access to the loading area anyway, so maybe he can answer that when he gets up here in just a minute. Um, and then we've added some more mature landscaping and landscaping, uh, a greater degree of landscaping along the east side on Drew. So, um, with that, I'll go to the next one. You should, one thing you might wanna pay attention to a little bit is how this landscaping works along 66th currently, and you're gonna see another plan on slide two, and everything is exactly the same with the exception of the landscaping on the south, and that has to do with the schemes, uh, with the driveway access. They relate to the driveway access. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have, um, Reed Schultz from Landform come up, he's the civil engineer, and I think he's probably in a little better position than me to answer questions relative to how we came up with the truck and the traffic access to the garage and loading area.
Okay, good. Welcome, Mr. Schultz. Give us your full name and business address.
Yeah, absolutely. Reed Schultz, Landform Professional Services, 105 South Fifth Avenue, Minneapolis, uh, sorry, Suite 513, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Like, uh, James said, civil engineer, site designer here on the project. So I'm gonna, kinda walk you guys through a couple of options that we looked at, we took you guys' considerations, um, and come up with a couple of schemes we'd like to present and have, uh, some feedback, um, on a couple of these options. Um, so as you recall in our meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the main concern was the thirty-foot drive, uh, or the, excuse me, the thirty-foot box truck, the delivery truck, FedEx, UPS type truck, um, and how that interacted with the vehicular traffic entering the parking ramp. So as you see, uh, in alternate one, the first concept here, um, we have provided a separate truck delivery access, a two-way delivery access, twenty-four five, twenty-four feet wide, uh, with a, uh, very prominent, uh, median divider, a four-foot median here, and a four, uh, fourteen-foot one-way vehicular, uh, entrance vehicular into the parking ramp. So this scheme here separates the, the both scenarios here, uh, with the bump out of, uh, entering the garage on the south side. As you recall, the entrance used to be a direct in. So, this scheme here, we, we bumped it out, uh, and then the vehicles would, uh, vehicles would enter the parked garage from the south side.
So are those, are those, uh, lanes of travel for trucks or cars at the same grade with the pavers that appear to be in between those two lanes of travel?
Uh, no, our thought was that this median would be a surmountable type median, it would be about four, six inches higher. It would be a more prominent feature to kinda separate the two a little bit.
You mean like, like on a roundabout in the middle?
Absolutely. It'd be a truck apron, it'd be able to be mounted, you know, driving trucks, be able to get in, but, uh, it would be another diversion there, per se. And, uh, so, that scheme there, uh, trucks can, can make, uh, a three-point move, can, can drive in, back in without, you know, interrupting the flow of traffic for customers coming in. This here is the same concept, uh, would show the tractor-trailer movement into that loading area. Uh, he would use this, uh, apron, per se, to back in, um, but like, as we discussed, uh, the hours of operations, uh, for that one. Alternate two, this is the alternate, uh, this sort of blends the two, I guess, what we had before. Uh, as you can see, we used to have this apron, we minimized the apron. Uh, so in this scenario, we're same, twenty-four feet wide here, two-way traffic, trucks only traffic. We have the same four-foot median, surmountable median, and a fourteen-foot wide, uh, customer entrance into it. Uh, the difference here is, is, uh, this drive aisle here is contained all within the twenty-foot paving and parking drive aisle setback, um, and the customers then would enter in the, the site here, uh, and then enter in the same exact position that we had originally on the concept two weeks ago. We removed the, uh, confusion of the, the truck apron, what looked, or appeared last week, or two weeks ago, as a sidewalk. It has now been removed, uh, but we do have this remaining truck apron that the tractor-trailer would have to use in order to make his movement in. Um, the main difference between the two is, in this scenario, the, uh, box truck, thirty-foot box truck, uh, would come in here, he would have to make, um, assuming he would back in in this scenario, he would have to make, uh, what would appear to be, you know, a movement into the customer traffic zone head-on and then back in. Uh, we felt that, you know, maybe this isn't the most ideal situation, however, he is not backing in, as you recall, two weeks ago, he had to back in against the traffic. In this case, he would come in here and he would have more visibility for customers and, and see potentially people coming in. There, uh, this, both concepts, as you see, this would be assuming that the delivery truck would back in, I'm not saying every scenario would be. If the UPS or FedEx driver didn't need to back in, if he were to unload, um, he could come in here safely, uh, without impeding the traffic, and then he could make a, a movement, uh, out of there without doing that, so.
Member Brendel, excuse me.
I have a question about this. Uh, can we go back to the thirty-foot truck, please? Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for separating the truck traffic from the cars. I appreciate that very much. Um, this one totally separates the trucks from the cars. So let's go to alternate two, thirty-foot truck. Okay. So, this one doesn't quite separate them because there still will be some interaction, but it won't be as severe as the other one. Um, when we saw this two weeks ago, the thirty-foot truck pulled into the parking garage and then backed into the loading dock. Can he still do that? Can he, would, is that, you see where I'm looking, straight into the parking garage? Is, is that available to him so that he wouldn't have to pull into the passenger lane?
It, no, it would not in these scenarios because, uh, the, the height of the box truck would be presumed to be taller than what the first level entry into the parking garage is. So ten-foot parking garage, we assume that these trucks would be, you know, up twelve and a half, thirteen feet tall, so they would not be able to enter into the parking ramp to make his turn at all.
Okay. So this is what he needs to do?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out a couple items that James had mentioned too. Uh, these details, uh, blowups here, we'll show a little bit more detail of what we, uh, kind of expanded upon in the landscape. We're still very conscious of the berming and the screening, that was a big concern. Um, and in both scenarios, we, we still incorporate that berming. The difference is, is in this scenario with us, uh, obviously coming into the setback, pushing it a little closer to 66, what we're doing is that we're gonna incorporate a retaining wall in here, kinda elevate that, we're gonna berm the backside and plant it with the same type trees, the spruce trees, the large mature trees that we had discussed in two weeks ago. So I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear that, that berming screening is still gonna be there, um, and we're gonna incorporate this retaining wall. Uh, and then we also are incorporating, um, some plaza areas as well as the two sidewalk areas. And I think the question too was, uh, the width of these sidewalks. Right now, they're designed both at five feet for both this, this guy as well as the newly added one.
All right, so are you, are you asking which alternate the council prefers? You, you prefer to do either one?
Yeah, I'd like to hear your guys' input, um, or impartial.
Member Bennett?
I really prefer the greater separation. Um, and it looks like what you've done then is moved the entrance to the parking ramp or that you're pulling it around the corner of the building. I'm assuming that is gonna fit with your design, but I think that, um, I think that greater distance, fourteen feet is a little wide, but I see what, for a vehicle traveling just one direction, um, but I see that you're doing some turning movements, it's certainly going to keep, help keep speed slow as people, um, access the ramp, and I do like the fact that there'll be less, it looks like, under most circumstances, you will not have a truck in the vehicle driveline into the ramp.
That is correct, yes.
I really appreciate that.
I suspect Member Bennett articulated well reasons why both of us like it, and I'm sure the rest
I like, I like
I prefer Member Brendel, but, uh, alternate one is the one I prefer.
Alternate one is the one I prefer because cars and trucks are completely separated.
I like the undulation.
So I think it's the safest.
Yeah, I do too.
A little more organic shape to the, to the front.
But it's not a tricky curve.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, you know, it was
How did, how did you pick fourteen feet?
We felt that fourteen, I mean, twelve, I mean, is, is, is an okay drive aisle, fourteen
Hey, halfway at one hundred has elevens underneath, you know, ten.
Or ten, is it, okay.
I mean, we're, we're definitely
That's fifty-five miles an hour.
Nary it up. Um, we felt that, you know, with the, the, kind of the zigzag movement here, a little wider might be a little easier for, for both customers and maintenance reasons and that sort of stuff.
Ask about the pavement in the front, the, the plaza, I think you called it?
Yeah.
Does that, is there a function that takes place at that spot? Is there a bus stop or?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, wait.
Wait for it.
All right, next issue. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
You know, one other thing I'd say about this, uh, this particular scheme, one of the other reasons it's a little wider is, as we enter the garage, we're entering it at an odd, you know, usually we like to enter buildings and sites and things at a ninety-degree angle, so a little wider roadway there helps us maneuver once we get inside the garage, because the garage is situated so it's one-way so that you've gotta get turned back this way, headed back that way.
It's a unique entry.
Yeah, it is, it is. I think it does a lot better job, though. It's a, it's kinda, uh,
Mm-hmm. It's very creative.
Gracious, it's got a nice curve.
Yeah, very creative.
Yep. Okay, so now we're gonna go on to, uh, the garage itself, let's say. I wanted to show you, kinda, some pictures of the existing garage, so you had a good image of it before we got going too far. This is off of 66th, that's kind of a view from across the street, looking at kind of a corner, and it's hard to see it because there are some nice trees there. Um, and then this is down along Drew. You can kinda see this third-story ramp that was added more recently here that straddles over the old pre-cast ramp. Um, and then right here is the backside along 65th. This is the, this is part of the new ramp, this ramp is, and when we were in here last week, our intention was to keep that because it was a speed ramp that accessed the second and third floors of the existing ramp. Second floor, we were putting back in at exactly the same height. We're taking all the second floor out and putting all-new second You can kind of see this third-story ramp that was added more recently here that straddles over the old precast ramp. And then right here is the backside along 65th. This is the, this is part of the new ramp, this ramp is. And when we were in here last week, our intention was to keep that because it was a speed ramp that accessed the second and third floors of the existing ramp. Second floor, we were putting back in at exactly the same height. We're taking all the second floor out and putting all-new second floor in, but we were going to access it at the same height. So this week, well, I'm going to go back a little bit here. We'll go back to one of the site plans. We are proposing to eliminate that ramp down at the end because we don't like it a whole lot. We don't need it anymore because we have an internal ramp inside the garage now in the new scheme. And we were saving it primarily because we didn't need to get rid of it. But now what we're suggesting is to get rid of that ramp and then basically give the city back their setback that they didn't have any longer and then to address this street with some landscaping. We also have, originally, we had the snowdrop. You have to have a snowdrop off of these ramps to collect snow. And we feel like this will be a better site because there's, it's much more generous now that we get rid of that ramp. So we have more area to have that maneuver done. So that's one of the things we're kind of proposing in this new elevation. So when you see the new perspectives here, you'll see it without the ramp. So this is where, this is the elevation, the new elevation of where that ramp was. So that's the 66th elevation, so it's that one. So we've eliminated that and put that back. One of the things that we kind of keyed in on last week, because I think there were a couple discussions, I think Councilmember Sprague, you mentioned when we started that this notion of that landscaping along Drew and 65th may be appropriate, but at 66, that certainly wasn't, and that it needed to be more of an architectural solution. And I think later then Councilmember Bennett made the point that whatever we do should be kind of carried around the building. And I think what we're proposing here today is a little bit more of a hybrid. So we've taken a look at kind of what you said and kind of what Councilmember Bennett said, and we've tried to look at it in terms of edges, like street edges, and how we meet the street a little bit more so. So once again, I'm going to go back to the site plan, just so we can get reoriented here. So when we looked at this, we looked at 66 as a primary edge and Drew and 65 as secondary edges. And then, of course, our tertiary edge is our interior lot. So along these, what we are trying to do is look at how this elevation meets the street. And so we've created this plaza very purposefully to kind of engage the street and engage the citizens a little bit more so, to have an area where they can kind of come out of. If you look at, for instance, if you go over and you kind of study Twin City Orthopedics, they did a very similar thing at their street level where they, you know, it's funny, you talk about Twin City Orthopedics being all screened. Well, that first level's all open, but they engaged the street in a way that really hid the fact that it was open. So I think that's what we're trying to do is engage the street in a primary, secondary, tertiary way. So we'll go back to the, so we're going to kind of march around the building. So this is the backside. We've enhanced the entries more here so that they're more prominent. You'll still notice, I think Councilmember Swenson, you mentioned that you weren't fond of the black. Well, we still got kind of black, but now it's gray. So we did tone it down. We've gone back to the bork and are looking at a gray. And I've got, I don't have a sample of that because it takes a while to work up samples, but I do have their color card, the Precaster's color card. Then you come around, oh, excuse me.
That's a panel, though. That's not a contiguous stripe around the entire building, is it?
This is a, down, this is, this is everywhere in prominence, we have a vertical panel.
She was, but she was objecting to the continuous stripe.
Talking about the horizontal. I didn't like the raised stripe.
Right.
Right. That is a part of the precast panels. So the bottom half of it or bottom third of it's one color and the top two-thirds is the casota stone color.
Are the precast panels designed to be the same color as the building?
Yes. We're trying to, you know what? The actual brick on the building, the old building's a little lighter and a little creamier. We're tending a little bit more that way on the casota stone. The rough-hewn casota stone is a little darker, so the stuff along branches is slightly darker. So we, there's a, when you get into these precast colors, there's 100 different, well, there's probably 150 different colors in of that casota stone range, there's probably 20 different colors in there, some of which you'd look at and go, I don't see the difference. You know what I mean? And others which are quite prominent, so. But I mean, if people had strong opinions about those, we can adjust the color. That's the beauty of precast. You can adjust it a bit to be one direction stronger or weaker, if you know what I mean. So then you come around the Drew side, and we've tried to make this entry, this is kind of a major entry, so we've tried to make it more prominent. This canopy sticks out. This particular angle doesn't really show it, but it sticks out. You can see where we're trying to, at least in the 3D rendering, show what the landscaping would be along that edge. So these are the secondary edges. Then we get down to our primary edge, and what we've done is we've put more into this. As you recall, it was just kind of a glass corner.
You beefed it up.
Yep. Yep. So we've done more to it. And actually, I have some additional renderings because as we step around the corner here.
Could you go back to Drew for a moment, please?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that vertical element, it looks like it's, it's pulled away from the, from the surface of the lot so that it creates a more depth.
It does step.
And it's not, everything's not on a single plane. Is that a fair characteristic?
There's three planes here. There's, let's call the buff color zero, and this is like about plus six, plus one foot kind of thing. So they each step out about six inches on the black. And then this canopy's out three, four feet, five feet, that kind of range.
Good.
So.
All right.
And obviously, the signage, we see those as signage areas, but we haven't finalized any signage at this point. We just know what the signage ordinances are, so we're trying to signify that we'd have signage at key areas as well. But the concept was to get some signifier at each prominent location or each decision location, let's call it. So I wanted to come around, this probably is a little better if you document camera person. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay. So right here, I suppose, is that the best place for it? Okay. So along this side, we've tried to beef up this corner, as you said, and we're carrying that canopy around the corner and we're continuing kind of that canopy down the side, although it's a lot less, you know what I mean? It'll be out a foot or two. It won't be the two to four feet out here. And I've come down the side, and this is a screening material that we perceive right now and what we've been looking at at least, and I've got a sample along if you want to see it, is a metal fabric. So they're called fabrics or meshes. But it would be in a similar category to louvers and those sorts of things. Our buildings, both the buildings tend to be a bit modern, more on the modern side, very clean lines, that kind of thing. So they're not classical buildings that, you know, the Twin City Orthopedics, the ramp has a pretty classical look to it. The office building itself is fairly modern, but the ramp has kind of a classical look. I think ours is kind of classical. One of the things I'd note about the ramp is that our ramp is a story less than, for instance, Twin City Orthopedics or Penn Stripes, but it's twice as long. So it's set up to be a very horizontal kind of ramp. It doesn't want to be as vertical, if you know what I mean? So we're trying to reinforce the horizontality of it rather than get into too much vertical. But one of the notions was, now, we have purposely, we've put a full height panel on the street level. We like the notion of keeping at least a level or two open so that people have eyes to the street, so they always know where they are, similar to like being in a skyway downtown where you cross a skyway and that's where you get your, you get redirected. You figure out where the heck you are. And that's always a good thing when you've got stairs and access points to kind of know where you are relative to the street. So I think that's an advantage. But down here, you'll see, this is that idea of that primary edge. What we're trying to do is connect this edge, there's a bus stop across the street, we have our building access rate up here, we have a prominent decision-making point along Drew and 66. So we're trying to make this more along the lines of the Twin City Orthopedics, make it more prominent and kind of inviting and engage that edge, I think, is what we're really after. So I can show you real quickly too. Here, I'll go grab the samples again so you can get a sense of those. Before I get going, this is kind of a metal fabric, for instance. Some people call them meshes, some people call them fabrics. This happens to be in steel, but they also come, we'd be using either a stainless steel or an aluminum so that it's maintenance-free because we don't want to put steel on the building in that form.
But it's silver, not gray. The rendering is dark.
No. It's hard in renderings to get silver.
Do a metallic color.
So if you actually zoom into the rendering, that mesh is drawn like a mesh, you know what I mean? Well, you wouldn't be able to see it on here, but I mean, on the, I.
Has a texture of the mesh, but the color's hard to reproduce.
Right. They end up being gray because the lines are so small, if you know what I mean, is what happens effectively. So this would be more of a silver or stainless steel color than, than just a raw steel. You can get this product painted as well, but we wouldn't want to paint it.
Are the fins on the commercial office building silver as well? Is that a?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, from a metal standpoint, we'd be going for more of a clear alzack on all our finishes. Now, some of that's not possible, you know, sometimes metal finishes, sometimes they're painted, sometimes they're anodized, sometimes they're kynar, what they call a kynar resin. So there's a number of different ways to get these finishes on, and they get close to each other, but they're not always the same. But this is generally speaking what's on the existing building, and this is what we're kind of going for with our metal colors. So this is a sample of the, these are the kinds of color cards we get from the Precasters. So there's some red, but this is the gray, which is actually quite a few tones lighter than the black. I didn't bring the black with me, but it's quite a few tones lighter. But to give you a sense, I'm going to tip this up, I'm going to put this down so you can get a sense of how this might work. And then this fabric gets held off of there, you know what I mean? And we overlap the voids. So as you get way far back, you can imagine, these have percentages of transparency, and you can get the woven wires closer or further apart so that it's either more or less transparent. So this particular one, I believe, is about 50% transparent to 60%, and you can get them down into 40% range for this particular fabric. There's a lot of other fabrics that are available. But it's kind of trying to move more towards the louver.
Member Bennett.
If I might, as a patient of a dentist at the Medical Arts Building where they have a lot of screening on their parking ramp, I think you want to have some daylight coming in because it makes wayfinding easier.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
Yeah. So are you saying that what you're going to recommend is the 50%, 50%? You said it comes in there where less light.
I think we'd be going more along that lines. I mean, I think our goal really is what we would do ultimately is order up real samples. And then you've got to get back from samples like this to see how they really function. It's kind of like the bus, the 3M product they use on buses where you can't see into the bus, but if you're inside the bus, you can see out. It's the same kind of notion. But we do a lot of, at Collaborative Design Group, we do a lot of transit facilities. So we did Hawthorne, for instance, and we did Smith Avenue over in downtown St. Paul. And you always want to have as much transparency as possible because of security reasons. So you don't want dark corners and things like that. So it's always good if you're doing louvers or whatever to have some level of light, natural light that comes in. And it's, you know, nowadays, it's just sustainable. It's the good thing to do, to make use of that light where you can get it. So that would be our preference, yes.
Thank you. Also want to make sure that Member Swenson gets credit for the all-around the building.
Okay.
I think she was the one who made that suggestion, do you?
I was the crabby ramp person.
That's okay.
Could you go back to your rendering?
Uh huh. Let me set this down.
Move that piece.
How heavy?
Yeah. I'm wondering if you looked at accomplishing the notion of getting some daylight in there to, as Member Bennett says, permit a little easier orientation and wayfinding by spacing out panels but having them go all the way across the front as opposed to having a half a dozen and then a big gap with traditional-style parking ramp exposure. Seems to me that you could, it would be more architecturally interesting if you had those elements all the way, marching all the way across, but you created more space between them to allow the light to come in than it is, than it would be to do it the way you've done now and still have that traditional ramp look on 66.
Sure. I mean, I think that, you know, we had, we had looked at putting them a little further down, so we put a couple more panels in, but we never had them going all the way across. So we didn't check that and we didn't put, we didn't try any more space in between them. You know, to be honest with you, I've got to do the very same thing that you're talking about. For me, I have to draw those things up and then visualize them, and then it becomes easier for me to see if it's a good solution or a bad solution, just aesthetically.
Yeah. And if you look at the east side of the new building where it has those horizontal lines, that part of the ramp, isn't that dissimilar from that? So personally, I'm comfortable where you are with it.
I actually like, I think the asymmetry on this side is more interesting. Sometimes you want symmetry, sometimes you want asymmetry, but it seems like with your gray elements, you're popping different, and this is more of a pop for me.
Yep. Typically with, you know, the way I lean is when I'm doing more very classical kind of stuff, that wants to be symmetrical and stuff that's more modern, that's where you kind of break the rules a little bit. Not that you can't have symmetry in modern buildings, but it tends to be the place, if you're going to do it, where you're going to have asymmetry or curves or those kinds of things tend to fit in very well with more modern looks. And certainly, these meshes and things are a more modern look.
Okay. Well, it's good progress.
Thank you.
Far, far superior to what we were looking at before.
One thing we may do too, and you know, last week, we talked about using a product called Aeroscraft, but because of consistency, we may look at precast on the office building as well. You've got to be really careful with masonry products and trying to match colors, especially when they're dissimilar materials or different materials.
Because they're weathered differently?
No, because sometimes what, you know, what you get on a sample board and what you get out in the field, you stand back, you know, half a block from it and you kind of go, oh, jeez, that's what I thought it would be. So we'll probably look at that as well, just to make sure we have good consistency, so.
Well, I'm ready to move resolution 201377 unless we've missed something.
I'll second it.
May I comment?
Mr. Ranky.
Within the resolution, there were a couple of things that I wanted to ask your consideration of.
Talking about the timeframes for deliveries, it'd be your number 13 with a restriction of the semi-truck deliveries between 7:00 and 6:00 p.m., excuse me, 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. weekdays and then on the weekends. That causes a conflict with our existing leases where we've indicated it's 5:00 to 7:00 already. And just recently renewed many of the leases in the existing buildings. So my request is that you allow it to remain at the 5:00 to 7:00, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m.
I'm fine with that if my second is fine with that.
5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m.?
Yes.
All right. All right.
Was there something else?
What other concern do you have?
That was it. You already covered the paver one.
All right.
Thank you.
Renew the motion with that additional change. You had a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Most say nay. Carrie, nicely done.
Thanks for coming back.
Mr. Holmes, did you want to comment at all? Quickly, give you 60 seconds.
Thank you. We're excited about this development, Ted Holmes at IRET in Eden Prairie. We've got a great investment in your community and want to continue to invest and work with your planning team to continue to do that, so thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
We do.
And thanks for taking good care of this building. Next, we have the restoration of neighborhood reconstruction projects. Wayne Hool has this matter.
Dear members of the council, tonight, in your pact that we have.
Kind of a status update on our restoration of our reconstruction projects. I know some of you folks have been receiving quite a few calls on the hydroseeding versus the sodding that we used to do on projects. So I wanted to kind of go through, kind of remind you how we got to this point essentially. Like I say, the past practice was that we used to sod all of our projects where we disturbed the grass vegetation area. So why did we look at changing that? In the last couple years... In the last couple of years with the drought conditions that we've had, it's really led to a brown, dead sod in those areas. It's basically when it started drying out, the sod, even if it was put in a couple of years ago, it would dry up. It was the sod that's coming out of this, the sod fields right now is not drought resistant. So it really burns up pretty quickly. What we found too is that in a lot of cases and a lot of the projects we've been doing the last couple of years have been low watering by the residents on the sod, even if it's existing sod. So without the proper watering by the residents and after the warranty period has taken place, the root establishment hasn't gone down deep enough and so it doesn't really maintain itself. So we, this last, about a year ago, we met with some industry experts in the sod and hydroseed field. We kind of had a what we call a sod summit or a grass summit and had them come in and give us their opinions on which direction to go. And so we actually, like I say, some of the other aspects of it is you never really match up on when you have, when you put sod in, even after a number of years, upwards of five to seven years or more, you'll never get the sod to match in with the existing grass that was there. And I'm not a seed or sod expert, but when we place seed in locations, it seems to blend in better over time. So you don't have that differences in types of grasses that are out there. And on the right side is an area that actually was sodded, I think in 2007, 2008, and this picture was taken this summer. And like I say, you can just see that it had burnt up, but the remaining portion of the grass was green. So some of the benefits that we found for hydroseeding is it's more tolerant in dry conditions because one is that the root structure gets more established, it gets deeper in there. If you're planting sod, they're cutting the bottom of the sod, cutting the roots off and so you're basically trying to reestablish a root system that has been cut out in the sod field itself. So, you know, in either case, it does take two to three years to establish itself, but we feel that hydroseeding actually is going to establish itself quicker and last longer. The maintenance needs are more apparent on sod. I say the resident ownership should be greater. We're hoping that more folks would look at our, the handouts that we have and actually would be watering the grass, even the hydroseed and the sod after our warranty periods to keep establishing that root structure and such. The hydroseeding actually is less expensive overall, but we weren't really looking at the cost of these items. We want to, our goal is to have a product that within a year to two years and even longer that people aren't going to recognize that we were there and reconstructed their roadway. So they look out at their boulevard and you have a nice grassy, grassy boulevard area. The hydroseed itself is a smaller environmental footprint when you're looking at the environmental aspect of it because it's grown in place versus having it to cut the sod out in the sod field, load it up on truck, haul it into the metro area and then relay it itself. As you're going through it, there's different steps. Typically on sod, you just put down the topsoil, smooth it out and then roll out the sod. But in hydroseeding, you prep the topsoil and actually we're looking at changing up our topsoil specifications for next season. It's always a refining process and City of Minnetonka has actually came up with a pretty good topsoil that they get a lot of the seed and actually sod to grow in versus just having topsoil that's onsite or brought in. This is after the hydroseed or actually the seed is placed and then the mulch, which is the hydroseed, the stuff that comes out of the hose that's sprayed on it to keep the seed in place. This is what that looks like, so it actually comes out green. It does turn to a brownish color after about a week or so. And then this is about three to four weeks out where you can see that it's, the grass is starting to fill in more and then about four to six weeks out, it's filled in pretty well in that location. Our specifications have changed, changed even from when we did Tracy Avenue a year ago to our projects this year is that we added in the specifications that the contractor has to water the seed for 90 days. It used to be about 40, 32 to 40 days is that they used to have to maintain the sod. And so we've extended that out to help out with that. We, and within those 90 days, our inspectors are working with the subcontractor to be sure that these folks are actually out there, you know, looking at the weeds and actually they're responsible for mowing the hydroseeding and such and then also knocking down the weeds. And if there's too many weeds, because in all your topsoil, no matter if you have sod or seed, you're always going to have some weeds that are part of that topsoil. So in some cases, they might have to put a herbicide down for it. The green mulch that you see on that, a lot of times you'll put down the green, that green mulch and what we've seen this summer is when they're watering it, the green mulch absorbs the water content and so it keeps it nice and moist and actually if you pick up the green mulch, you can see the seeds actually germinating and setting in and driving that root structure down. So the green mulch actually really helps keeps everything in place. Yep, there are bare spots when you're looking at this and in a lot of cases, the subcontractor has come back within a few weeks that they see that they didn't spray enough, put enough grass seed down, put enough mulch down. We got, if you recall too, on the Lake Edina project, we got hit with the hailstorm. That was right after they did the first stage of that. So they were actually back there reestablishing or re-putting down a lot of the grass seed and the hydromulch in the areas that it washed away itself. Like I say, after the 90 days, that the contractor will, is responsible for making sure that we, you know, have a real healthy looking lawns. I covered the weeds on this. The one thing on the weeds that we're being told by the experts is that the first set of weeds that are coming up is that after they mow them, is that actually that'll, if they don't go to seed, is that they won't come back essentially. So that's for those types of weeds. The other item I want to point out too here is on the 90-day period. From November 1st to April 15th, those 90 days don't apply. So if they put this down, let's say the last couple of weeks of October, is that they'll have, the first part of the 90 days will start, but then it won't start, it'll suspend itself in November 1st and then the days start counting on April 15th. So people shouldn't be alarmed that if we're putting, happen to put hydroseed or grass seed down late in the season, it's actually better to put it down after a certain point where it becomes dormant. So you do a kind of a winter planting and then when the ground thaws out in the spring, then it starts growing with the moisture and everything that's on that. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Member Sprague, first.
I actually do have probing questions because this has been a topic for a while and mainly it grows out of our transitioning to this type of application from sod to hydroseed and the lessons learned over time. 70th Street was, I think, our last sod collector street that we did.
That's right.
And it did well for the first year, but then the second year it had the drought. I can't remember exactly how that timing went. A lot of it burned out, not just in the public right-of-way, but in adjacent to homeowners as well. And on a busier road, the maintenance, well, the connection to the boulevard strip and the homeowner is less than in a local project within a neighborhood where they have this expectation that they, there's more ownership expectation and maintenance. They do more maintenance on the right-of-way even though it's not technically their land. And then we had Tracy, which was the first hydroseed collector and 44th.
44th was the first one, yes.
And 70th is, it was, unfortunately fell into this time where it got both sod that burnt up and then hydroseed over sod, which didn't work out. And now it looks, it just looks horrible. And the thing that concerns me is about expectation of value that we're delivering to residents because we're putting way more value into the right-of-way with pedestrian and bike facilities. We're delivering more value in a right-of-way. But the, but the green space is not, on the streets I mentioned, do not meet that mark. And so with hydroseed versus sod, I'm concerned that we meet that same level of value and finish. So I drove Tracy because I, when I talked to people in the Lake Edina neighborhood, I said, go take a look at Tracy and 44th to see what hydroseed looks like a couple, a year later. And Tracy has issues. I mean, there are spots, a couple of spots where it's perfect, but most of it has a lot of weeds. There's barren spots, it's very inconsistent down the corridor. 44th, I think, is more consistent. I'm not exactly sure why or what happened. But with changing over the practice, we have to address the quality level because I think that's the expectation of the public in what we're doing. I'm not sure if hydroseed has the same density over time as sod?
I believe it does over time, especially if you get the water on it.
Okay. But the weed control thing and what happens when we're outside the 90-day period? Because it seems like the, Tracy is an example of where the weeds, the density necessary to prevent the weeds is still not there a year later.
Yeah, see on Tracy that we didn't have the 90-day period on that. And so it'll be interesting to keep evaluating the neighborhoods that we're doing this next spring and next summer just to see what the weed conditions are on those areas. And I would suspect that if they do have a lot of weeds, that, you know, our engineering staff will take a look at that and see if we should be hiring out some folks to go out and hit them with some herbicides and things. But on Tracy itself, we'll have to go back and look at, just like we've talked about on 70th Street, to go back and dig up some of those boulevards and topsoil them and hydroseed, seed some of those other areas or else put in lilies. I mean, that's another option on some of these collector roadways is to take the boulevards and actually put the day lilies in like we have along a good portion of 70th Street. That has been very successful.
I think whatever, whatever the product, there is homeowner maintenance or property owner maintenance required at some point, and I think you've acknowledged that. And for those of us who prefer not to use lawn chemicals, and we haven't since 1987, I have a neighbor who also had a dog, ours unfortunately passed on, but she taught me the benefits of overseeding, which you can just do by hand. And in drought years, it's not as fruitful, but it is a very productive technique in rainy times. And it's just buy a bag of grass seed at the start of the season and every time it, well, even if you're going to water or you're watering a garden that's going to also benefit the grass, you go out and just hand overseed. And to the point in the staff report, it truly is the density that's going to control. And nothing is going to keep that density on hydroseed or sod without some care that's ongoing outside the maintenance period. Whether people are going to use, you know, lawn service, whether they're going to apply chemicals themselves, whether they're going to overseed, some care at some point. 44th Street does, I think, look pretty good. I think it's also another year, it wasn't last year, and I think it had the benefit of some watering period before fall and winter set in. So I think the experiment still has value, but I would caution and encourage people to expect that at some point their need to care for it's going to kick in.
Our practice still needs to recognize that on collectors, the ownership expectation, the maintenance expectation for the adjacent homeowner in that boulevard is very low as opposed to on a local project where they take more ownership and do more maintenance of that. So if we're going to use this in a collector, it needs to be, it needs to be able to be maintained to a point where it can then take care of itself better. Because if you drive down the collectors that I mentioned that were done, I'm not proud of that work. It doesn't match the standard of everything else we're putting into the right-of-way. So I realize it's, those are transitional streets. So I guess what I'm saying is going forward, those streets should be readdressed because they were in the early experimental period and we want to get them to the 44th Street level. And then going forward within the neighborhoods, I hope that after the 90-day period, you don't have to, I don't want to have to weed up, apply to be able to get the grass to the same level as you would get with sod. I mean, that would be the best outcome. Because I agree with you, you don't want to have to just weed apply everything to get it to that level.
Yeah, every golf course that's built is now built with seed and not sod because sod doesn't work. I've spent two sessions on the Edina Country Club Board feeling sand watch sod that's been grown in special chemicals brought up in a refrigerated truck and twice I've had to rip out everything they did with sod and put in grass seed. So I have no problem with you using grass seed, I think it's effective. I had sod on mine, I had to replace it all, but I felt it was my responsibility to water it. So, and I'm at State Aid Road, but I'm not 70th and I don't have a separate boulevard. I think there is some homeowner responsibility and I think that we can't just say because it's a different street, there isn't. I do agree that 70th was caught between our switch and maybe it isn't presenting itself how we would have it present today. But I do think hydroseeding is the way to go. I'm pleased that you made that change. I like the 90-day period of watering and I think you're doing a great job.
Member Brindle.
Thanks. The way that grass works, with enough water, it will grow and it will keep the weeds from growing. And, because it's very invasive with enough water and that's, I think, the biggest challenge. In our neighborhood, we've recently had CenterPoint Energy come through and replace some of the gas connections, the natural gas connections. And they hydroseeded and that's within the last month. And I think we got some neighbors ready to mow of what has grown and they have been dutifully watering that. CenterPoint, I think, came in and did the hydroseeding. I'm not aware that they've come back and watered. I think now it's up to the residents and they are doing it. There's one spot where, I don't know what happened there, whether it was the gas company or what, but it looks like it was hydroseeded, but it's in a wooded area along Indian Hills Road and it never gets watered. So it's just sitting there. But all those that got watered are growing beautifully.
On the collector streets, like Member Sprague mentioned, it caused me to think of 70th west of 100, up at 70th and Cahill. And I know one year there was a lot of winter kill up there in the boulevard. But then what the Highcroft East Townhouse Association did, I think, was talk to you about a salt-resistant grass seed. And it's been green ever since. So on these collector streets that are going to get a lot of salt and sand or salt pushed upon the boulevard, you know, are we using from a hydroseeding standpoint that salt-resistant seed?
You know, I think we are, but I'll double check on that because I remember actually doing the chloride tests on that, on those boulevards to see how much salt was in the soil. And there wasn't actually that much on, in that location, but we did recommend.
It doesn't take much salt to kill the grass.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
But that's a good, that's a good point to look at that also.
So I think what I hear is Member Sprague is asking for some sort of assistance from the city in making the boulevard on 70th look better. Is that what I'm listening, hearing?
No, what I'm saying is on collectors, I don't know what the, the maintenance period is 90 days, but on collectors where adjacent homeowners feel less connected to do anything about the boulevard, do we want to just say it's their responsibility, not have enough maintenance and then deal with it a year later when we have to drive through it and say this is not up to our standards? Or do we want to try to attack it in the frontal?
90 days is kind of a long time.
And acknowledge the realities, but was that, was Tracy 90 days?
No, Tracy was not 90 days, that was either the 32 or 40 days.
So maybe the ongoing experiment will resolve that, but it is an issue because you can see how the old experiments are today.
But there are some spots, as you pointed out, on 70th and those public spaces near the roundabout that look like they're burned out or really, really weedy.
70th is the worst because we got sod, which we acknowledge is not the best practice now. Then it burnt out and then they hydroseeded over the sod and it didn't, it didn't press all the way through and it just, it looks like a wasteland. Tracy is a different issue. There's hydroseed, but there probably wasn't enough maintenance, probably not enough water, to Mary's point. And now a year later, it's not up to our standard. I mean, just drive down, there are a couple of spots, probably because that adjacent homeowner, like on the corner of Benton and Tracy, has done a great job, but most of the corridor looks spotty and weedy.
So it sounds like the salt-resistant. So it sounds like the salt-resistant seed is one of the potential recommendations if it's not being done now. And then another thing is, when that maintenance period is shortened by fall, is there some way to make up for it? I know people want ground cover and it's good to get ground cover. And I think on Forty-Fourth Street, it was a late-season application on Empire Street.
But it's spread back up in the spring.
It carries over.
Did they restart the ninety days in the spring?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, then?
Forty-Fourth Street was ninety days?
I think ninety days.
No, it wasn't ninety days, but it was seeded in, in, in the frozen conditions. So then it started, started growing when it started thawing out in the spring. And that's a, that's a tree-covered corridor also. Tracy's a little bit tree-covered, but Seventieth definitely is not tree-covered, especially down by the Roundabout.
To Member Sprague's point, I don't know how you solve that problem of getting people more engaged in the ownership on a collector street. You know, it's, I feel comfortable with the notion that on the state aid streets, we, we do the sidewalks, we pull the sidewalks. But I don't like the idea of coming along with a water truck and watering the boulevard on the collectors. I mean, it just doesn't seem like that's something we ought to be doing.
I'm, I'm not either. But all I'm saying is, we got to get that first application right to avoid having to come back and redo it.
Agreed.
Yeah. And ninety days of maintenance plus salt-resistant seed may give us a grass that looks pretty decent.
Yeah. But.
Thank you for coming. I just wanted to get this out in front of you so that, that you know that we are observing it and evaluating it.
Do we hire someone to do that, or do we do that hydroseeding ourselves?
We hire that out. Yeah. That's part of the project, that they have subcontractors that come in.
Just to Member Bennett's point, you know, I think there would, it would be appropriate, also Member Sprague's point, you know, maybe we ought to be overseeding a little bit with hydroseed from time to time.
They do bump, they, they do bump up the, the mixes. It's, it's much more so than what MNDOT would spec for hydroseeding.
Have you looked into the economy of doing it ourselves as opposed to contracting for it?
We haven't yet, but we always can look at that in the future. So.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Wayne.
All right. We've got, yeah, correspondence and petitions. I take it we have everything on our, on the dais that we need.
Yes.
Manager Neil, thank you. And then on the aviation noise update, Member Bennett and I had a sidebar here, and she quickly crafted kind of a knockoff letter that was, I think originally came from the city of Minneapolis, but she's done a good job of making it a better letter, a more appropriate letter for the city of Edina in terms of proposing to the council that we submit a letter with respect to supporting environmental assessment, full environmental impact assessments, wherever we've got PBN or RNAV involved potentially. So this is the edited form of letter. I actually think you had more edits than this.
I did, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think what we were looking for is there, one of the biggest.
It's in the back. It's in there. It's the last sheet of the.
We have a new acronym.
Yeah.
CATTX.
Categorical exclusion. And I think one of the concerns about PBN and RNAV is that the FAA position or there is an exclusion that's been granted in terms of studying the environmental effects of it. And the, the problem with that is the type of concentration and the increase in frequency of flights that that's going to allow is really something that should be studied. And so this is commenting on that exclusion and its, its undesirability or limitation in giving a good and needed assessment of PBN before it's implemented. Again, city of Minneapolis submitted very extensive comments. Their involvement with this, of course, has been much longer. And they've, they actually had dedicated staff in the past. They're moving toward this again at this point. A planner whose time is devoted in part to this, I think, Member Swenson, you actually know him. And then also some of their legislative aides working with their council members. Mogish.
Oh, yeah. When he gets back to work. He got hit on his bike.
Oh.
And he's spent the last two weeks at home with a brain, not a severe brain injury, but enough that he had to take a few weeks off from work. And he's slowly working his way back. Paul Mogish.
I'm so sorry, so sorry to hear that. But a lot.
He had a helmet on though.
Good. Good. A lot of brain power working on that in the city. And of course, we have the shared interests because it's the roots that originate over Richfield and Minneapolis that are going to be concentrated over Edina as well.
Member Bennett, I just, as we discussed this earlier, I'm wondering if you didn't intend to also eliminate that second paragraph.
Um, to me, to me.
Starting the city's concerns.
The essence of what is in front of us is the last half of paragraph three and all of paragraph four.
All paragraph four.
Those really are the, the most important. And it states, "We believe that because of the unique nature of the changes, PBN procedures have the potential to impose on communities, namely the increase of frequency and concentration of flight patterns. The current process for reaching any regulatory categorical exclusion or CATTX is insufficient to accurately measure the true noise impact. We support full environmental assessments for PBN implementation at all operational evolutionary partnership and non-OEP airports in the United States until further consideration of the health and physiological impacts of new PBN procedures can be studied and new appropriate metrics for impact can be put in place that reflect the potential impact on communities. We support federal investment into the study of these impacts."
I'd like, though, in the second paragraph, the issue of the per-flight basis.
Okay.
Because one of the issues on this study is there is a big difference between the, the problem that people have with singular flights and repetitive flights happening. And if you only measure the noise on one flight and not what happens on consecutive flights linked together, then you really haven't looked at the effect it has on people. So is that singular per-flight basis supposed to be something else? In number two, the city's measuring noise on a per-flight basis?
I'm not privy to the discussions that were underlying this, the preparation of this letter in Minneapolis, which is.
Okay. So then I may just be presuming something that isn't the case.
No, but, but you are correct as to the concern.
Yeah. But I, but I, I think the rest of this does talk about assessments and everything, but it doesn't say that just looking at a per-flight assessment works. We don't feel that that's effective, an effective way to assess it. Correct?
Right.
Mr. Penn up in the air.
Yes. Well, first of all, let me say for, for, for Councilmember Bennett's purpose, I didn't mean to edit your edits. I just misinterpreted maybe your, your edit notations. So you can make this, you can, you can edit this comment as much as you want, but I think the, the essence of it is, is pretty clear that what we're asking for here is, is based on what the city of Minneapolis has asked for, which is that we want, we want RNAV implementations to be subject to environmental review. And you can say it a lot of different ways, but that is really the main.
Sure.
Reference of, of this statement. Because currently FAA was successful in getting an exemption from doing any kind of environmental review when they implement RNAV. And so that's what this is coming to. This was, this language was developed by the city of Minneapolis. I, I got it from Gene Ranieri, who's their director of intergovernmental affairs. And.
This needs to go tomorrow, doesn't it?
It should, yes. It should go tomorrow.
I'm fine with however it's crafted because the message is really important.
So I'll entertain a motion from a council member that we authorize the city manager to prepare and execute a letter on behalf of the community covering the issue that we've discussed here in.
So moved.
To the FAA.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carrie. Member Bennett, any other aviation updates for?
Yes. October is a public input meeting month at the NOC. They alternate month by month. And September was the regular meeting of the NOC. This, the public input meetings are always in the evening. The regular meetings are during the daytime. The next public input meeting is Tuesday, October 22nd. So it's a night when we do not have a regular council meeting. This is at 7:00 PM and it's at the MAC offices, which are 60, 40, 28th Avenue South.
Is this the meeting where you have to have permission to speak?
This is not.
And two people have to vote to give you permission to speak?
This is not. This is the meeting that is designed and held specifically for the purpose of speaking, of people speaking. And the last one in Richfield, I think they said that fifty-five people signed in, but there were easily a hundred people in the room. It was standing room only. There were several MAC commissioners in attendance. Mayor Hovland, Manager Neil and I were there. I believe that Chris Hocker was there as well from the planning department.
October 22nd.
October 22nd, 7:00 PM. And about twenty people spoke at that meeting in, was it August? Time is flying. And about a third of them were from Richfield, about a third from Minneapolis, and about a third from Edina. So I really encourage residents to come out and express their concerns, ask their questions. There are written answers provided to the questions that are submitted. A person does not have to speak. They can also submit a question in writing at the meeting. And the MAC, the NOC or Noise Oversight Committee website again is at macnoise.com.
All right. Thank you. All right. Manager Neil, any comments on aviation issues?
Nope. No, none for me.
All right. Thank you. Council comments. Member Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. As evident from tonight's discussion, I think we need to revise our subdivision ordinance. And I've talked about this briefly with Roger over the phone. But it seems to me like we need to have one section with the objective criteria for code compliance subdivisions, and the other section with the rest of the criteria for the ones that require variances. So I don't know how, how the rest of you feel about that and how we can get going on that. But the biggest concern for me is the public perception and their ability to grasp our review standards and, and get themselves involved in the process.
Yeah. Fair comment, appropriate comment.
Is that a difficult division, Roger, to draft and then send to planning?
It could be.
Here. Means you'd have to spend a lot of time on it?
We'd be working, the way it normally would work, a planner or a consulting planner would do a draft and I would work with that, with the planner. We work in conjunction.
Okay.
I think the issues are more extensive than just the subdivision ordinance.
Well, I would agree. But I think as the first step, we need.
I know what you're talking about, the radius, but.
To.
Well, no, I, I really think, I think.
Oh, eight hundred.
As we've had questions for staff on different issues, the answer usually is that it maybe dates from the 1970s or 1980s. And we've addressed this in the past where there are some communities that have had a more regular updating of their ordinance as time's gone on. And we have not. So just like it would be with a house or with the school district when it had its referendum back in the mid-2000s, the work has to be done at some point and either can be condensed into time or it can be done gradually over time. We don't have the choice of the latter anymore. That time has passed. We didn't do it gradually over time. And so now we're at, another question that has come up in conjunction with a matter that didn't come before us this evening but could have, is the question of how, what do you do with water? Apparently, not every community or most communities don't do. What we do with it, where the lake, the, the body of water does not get included in a lot area if the, what is it, above the two, see, it's complicated even to explain it, but at some, at some water level, it's included or not included.
Above the high watermark.
The high watermark. Sorry about that. And so I think we need to look at what best practices are. We need to look again at what's clear, practical and enforceable. And right now, we have something that's difficult even to explain. And so it's not just one provision. It really is more extensive than that. There's also kind of questions of regulation. Is a ten-foot setback really adequate for a lot that's a hundred-plus-foot wide?
We just sat and looked at the work plan for Planning Commission, though, at five o'clock, well, actually, at six o'clock tonight. And nowhere in that was the discussion of doing this. And they have a completely full plate. So I was trying to figure out a way at least to separate these two things and get some clearer definition in a way that didn't make planning have to review it, other than in its final form, maybe, and then pass it on to us. And that's what I was hoping to do, and then put it on maybe a more broad discussion on other things on their plate for a year from now. But really, if you look at what they have, is there something you'd take off their plate to not do this?
No. In fact, I made, at some point this evening, I made the reference that I don't think the Planning Commission has the time right now to undertake this task in its full form. I think that they can consider it when it comes to them. I don't think they have the time to be drafting, as they've done with others. So in this instance, I think we're at a point where we really need to think of other options. We, we, I would, I would be happy to refer to the city attorney or someone else who works on this kind of thing. But I don't think we have the time.
How about we ask?
Personally, looking, looking at the language, I, I can see a way to make it crafted for code compliant and non-code compliant rather quickly, and then get it into practice. We can always review the, the underlying policies as well at another time or ongoing, whatever. But right now, we know that the ordinance in front of us is not serving the public who looks at it. They don't, they don't understand how we are, and our own planning commission didn't understand how to, how to utilize the ordinance. So that's a problem for me.
I, I think if, if it would please the council that Carrie and Roger and I can put our heads together and we can bring you back some options.
That's what I was going to ask. Thank you.
In terms of timelines and.
Fine.
Contracting it out.
Perfect.
Whether we use attorneys or planners or however we would do it. But we'll bring you back a few options that you can consider.
Thank you.
My second point was, how did the neighborhood workshop go?
Oh, the mayor and I got to go to it.
You guys got to go? I, I just wanted to get, hear from Karen, who's been leading this charge and see what your impressions were.
Oh, that neighborhood, you mean the neighborhood is too far.
Neighborhood organizing workshop.
Yes. We held the Organize Your Neighborhood Workshop on Saturday morning. And we had about thirty participants, which was more than we were expecting. I think the weather cooperated with us. And it was a great discussion. We had a panel of leaders from current neighborhood associations discuss their experience and what they work on. We talked about the city's policy with respect to recognized neighborhood associations. We talked about first steps to organizing. Edina Community Foundation talked about some of the support that they can provide. So it was, we got really positive feedback. So we were very encouraged.
If you read your correspondence that came in late, there's a really interesting series of letters from the same person, working on a neighborhood organization where there's this fear and there's obviously people not wanting to do it because, you know, and then all of a sudden she goes to the neighborhood workshop and that letter back that she sent her neighbors about, here's why they're doing this. This is why it makes sense. This is why I think we should do it. And she's on board. So the change in her, her apprehen, from her apprehension to, to her acceptance was amazing in those letters.
Yeah. And we had Emily Bedke from my neighborhood, the Woodhill, well, what we call that, Lake Cornelia, in the, was there and got some information. And I'm hoping she'll get together with some other people and get, get on the bandwagon. Also, in, in that respect, congratulations to, I read the, the, our magazine today. And it said that Edina Morningside was the first recognized neighborhood association. And it was there in print. And I, I wanted to congratulate all those people because that's a great honor. Speaking of great honors, I had the honor of riding with Member Swenson on the float for the homecoming parade. My son Charlie was with. We threw out some footballs. We had a great time.
We ran out of footballs, but Jennifer has guaranteed us that there'll be more next year.
It was just, it was a great event. And the, your communications contact was there, Kalen Martin.
Yeah.
As well. So just a great event. And.
And Jordan, you need to drive.
And Jordan was driving, a little erratically, but, you know.
Well, only because we bounced balls off people that rolled in front of the truck and he had to do a stop.
It was his first time. It was before the balls, but we'll work on that.
Scott Neal did actually a pretty good job for the Fourth of July. Did he, until he ran into the, the bank. Did he, until he ran into the bank?
It's not a real parade until you run into something.
Yeah.
Anyhow, good fun. That's all I got.
I'm not jumping in the frozen lake though.
Yeah, no, it was great to be in the parade and I think it's not, it's a good thing for us to do continually from now on. I don't know what we'll use as a float. Somehow the birthday candle's gonna get a little tired looking after a year or two.
Is it upright again?
Yeah, it's upright. It's been fixed since that 4th of July debacle. The other thing is we now have nice...
It's more of an incident, not a debacle.
Incident, okay.
Yeah.
An incident, I'll give you that. We now have little footballs that have our names on it that go on the side of the vehicle for the parade, so that was great. There is a waffle breakfast starting at 8:00 at Braemar Sunday morning that supports the Lions and the Spalding statue up at 50th. We're making huge headway into gathering enough money to buy it and the goal, well, the goal is more than the $7,650 it's gonna cost. The goal is...
Their past is gold.
Yeah, yeah. So our goal is, our goal is to go ahead and help public art continue in the future. 8:00 AM is when it starts and I don't know when it's finished. I just know when it starts because I called Larry today. And the Concord Junior, no, the Southview 7th and 8th graders will be playing at the event, which is very nice.
Pretty soon we'll be able to afford a real Calder mobile or something.
Maybe. Hey, this is just a start. That's all I have.
Number four.
Thank you. Spent five days in Detroit Lakes, Grand Forks and Lakota, North Dakota. And Mayor, your hometown and my, one of my hometowns, looks really nice. They have recovered completely and really resilient city. Beautiful tree-lined streets, sidewalks, made what had been a completely flooded neighborhood into a huge park. They had a large dog park and a small dog park and a disc golf course. And there were a number of people perambulating and in downtown and it was very, very good to see. The small town I was in now has 674 residents, but it too has sidewalks on both sides of the street and curb and gutter. And it was interesting to see, again, this is a town I've spent a lot of time in over the years, and the vision that led to the building of that infrastructure in the first place and a town park with a swimming pool. Now it's 674 people, but the pool is still there on the sidewalks and the curb and gutter and the high school with the marble floors that was built during the WPA.
Are they facing any issues due to the rise of the water around Devil's Lake? Is that trending east at all?
Well, it definitely is. It definitely is. And the town is a rather flat one. And we had a personal experience with mud during our visit, getting stuck in the mud in a minivan.
You were mudding in the minivan?
I was the one getting the van out of the minivan while my husband was driving and not running the engine, so it was...
Medieval times.
Perambulate.
Says on the front of her minivan.
Yeah, perambulate, to walk or travel through or around a place or area. Mary.
Yes.
Perambulating and mudding at the same time, that's pretty impressive.
It was a good word. I was impressed.
What the water is doing is it's making the hunting very, very good. And so the hotel in this small town is actually burgeoning with visitors who are...
Resplendent.
They're to hunt as well as working on the railroad.
I do know that word.
So it was a good trip, but I'm glad to be back.
Thank you. Member Brindle, you've got something coming up there with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon.
Yes, that's part of my comment. I have been out and about Saturday, September 28th was Southdale Shopping Center's rebrand opening. And they had events in the morning focused on children in the children's play area, kind of in that area. Then in the afternoon, they had events in Center Court. They had a fashion show. They had a variety of events that showed off the stores. And then in the evening, they went outdoors and this is after it rained and was quite chilly in the evening. But they had a Ferris wheel, they had music, they had, they had, Rojo was out there. I can't remember if there was another restaurant out there or not, but it was a fun day and the fireworks were shot off at 9:00. Chris Raffedell and his family and a number of families showed up between 8:00 and 9:00. And that's really, it was fun to see people come specifically for the fireworks. But congratulations to Southdale. It's a beautiful renovation and it's nice to see the community come out for it. I think it's the most extensive renovation ever at Southdale. There have been other renovations, but never to this extent. So it's, it's good. The I-494 Corridor Commission, at the, two meetings ago, there was a gentleman, Randy Eastling, I think is his name, from the city of Richfield. He's a city engineer. And he presented...
Mike Eastling.
Mike Eastling, thank you. And he presented some ideas for Crosstown Highway 62. They have federal money to upgrade 66th Street, but the traffic on 66th is very heavy due to the problems on Crosstown. So they're looking at grassy area in the center of Crosstown. They're looking at ways to add a lane in each direction. And they would encroach on neighborhoods that would not require buying any houses, but they would put, they would put noise walls up. There's not a lot of space, but they do want to open Crosstown up to accommodate more traffic. So there is more to come on that. He is taking that proposal around to different cities that would be affected, just to kind of get their nod. He has visited the Edina Transportation Commission. And so eventually, with the support of other cities, he will go to, city of Richfield will go to Mendat for permission.
Does that include bridge upgrades?
Not that I'm aware of. No, it's just capacity on Crosstown.
Well, you can't get more lanes underneath France and Xerxes right now because they weren't widened. So how do you get more capacity on the Crosstown?
It's, well, it's in two locations. It's between 35W and Penn and it's west of France. So, no, you're not gonna do anything where the bridge is constrict. So, but there are a couple areas that are key. If you're going east on Crosstown, which I don't do very often because I can never get on it, but if you're going east on Crosstown, you're either gonna be in a backup around Xerxes to Penn, or you're gonna hit the backup when you go east of 35.
Or if you're coming from 169 at 12:00 PM or later, you're gonna get backed up.
Use another route.
It's amazing how much traffic from the regional system flows into Edina.
Yep.
I mean, there's nowhere else to go.
It does. Nice Ride. I mentioned during council comments at our last meeting that with the increase of high-density housing in the Southdale area, I would like to see a Nice Ride stationed there. And Allison Pence from Alina heard that and we visited and I've got a meeting coming up with a gentleman from Nice Ride. And so we're gonna look at what it takes, how we can get it, where other Nice Ride locations would be in Edina and how to make that work for us.
Didn't we have one at 50th planned? Do you remember this, John?
They were talking with, they had instigated a conversation about 44th and France.
Oh, 44th.
In Minneapolis.
Okay.
And they've really got it, their expansion has been in Minneapolis. So 44th and France, it would be on the Minneapolis side. 50th and France, it would be on the Minneapolis side. So this would be the first one in Edina.
The ones around Calhoun and Harriet are pretty park-based. They actually relocated one at Calhoun down by the Bakken Library, so about 36th and west Calhoun Parkway. And then there's another at Harriet. I think that might be the link. And so in our community, having it near shopping is good, but if we think parks, I mean Centennial Lakes Park would be a very good place and some tie probably with Nine Mile Trail. And then depending on what happens on the west side of France, there might be an opportunity for something there. Some of them are fairly closely located.
Then, speaking of traffic, just, there's a promotion in October to share a ride with a spouse, neighbor, friend or coworker for one day in the month. Just pick a day and reduce the amount of traffic on the road. So commuter services is out there trying to encourage people to look at sharing rides in order, for the purpose of reducing the number of cars. And lastly, it is October 12th at 5:00 that Edina, Hopkins, Minnetoka and St. Louis Park, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon will be recognized, will be proclaimed. So each city will be proclaimed a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon city. The network is called the Southwest Twin Cities Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network. So we've had a website that was really committee-driven because it just kept us organized and what our process was, where we were in the action plan. And now we've totally rebuilt the website. It's very nice and it's Southwest Twin Cities Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of some shape. It's a different, totally different website. But it's for anyone who wants to come there and find out about the network, sign up to volunteer, sign up to receive help. So we'll get the, we'll get the website to you.
Good, thank you. All the way back to the 18th of September, at Salute, that evening, 10% of all proceeds on restaurant sales went to help public art and buying Spalding. And I gotta commend Member Swenson and Barbara Laveller from our Public Art Committee for all the work they did. It was a lot of fun down there that night. You had a big table full of people and Barbara did.
And so did the Lions. Lions all wore their vests.
It was really enjoyable. And I think the Salute people really enjoyed themselves as well. Scott was at, yeah, I was next to DeeDee, his wife.
What'd you have?
Lamb stew.
Yes, we had the same thing.
It was delicious.
It was delicious. Spring stew.
And let's see, then we had, walked with the mayor on the 21st. We started here, went through the Grand View District. It was a small crowd, but one benefit of it was both our co-chairs of the CAT showed up. So I got to spend some extra time with Jennifer Janaby and Mike Fisher as we walked through the whole area and talked about the RFI. So that was, that was a good, a good side benefit. And then on the 24th, we had a meeting here with the county. Jan Callison was here as well, met with some of the neighbors on Xerxes. Wayne was there and Wayne and Jim Groob, the county engineer, have come up with some interim solutions over there to enhance safety. And I don't know what the status is, Wayne, on you putting up those lane barriers, those bump outs.
Actually, the county is meeting with the city Minneapolis residents on October 11th.
Okay.
And after that meeting, if they're in agreement with the temporary bump outs, then the county will start putting those up and actually restripe the roadway.
Yeah. And we had some turnout from the neighborhood, but not as much as we would have liked. Still have some issues over there that are bothering some of the folks. And then on the 26th, they had the jury art show over at the Art Center and just a great turnout for that event. I'd never seen that many people over there. And then on the 27th, for a couple hours in the morning, I wandered over to the Wilder Foundation. We had, they had over there a conversation on Minnesota's transportation future sponsored by the Transportation Alliance and Transit for Liveable Communities. It was a wonderful turnout and as they talked about strategies to employ with the upcoming legislative session to finally get a transportation funding model in place that would fund all of the needs we have from a road, bridges and transit standpoint over time. The grand opening, grand reopening of Southdale, I was over there Saturday afternoon to help with that. I must've, I must've missed you between all the visits you had over there. It was cold. It was right after it rained. We did it, I don't know, 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon and all we did was manage to entertain the security guards and a few people were employees from Southdale out there with the band that was gonna play. And then, let's see, this, Monday morning, Manager Neil and I hosted the mayors and city managers along the Southwest LRT line. RT wasn't there, he was still in London with the Viking team, but we had a productive meeting relative to Southwest LRT. It's always good to have these conversations in a smaller environment, I think, on these issues that are important in all these different communities, whether it's the operations and maintenance facility for Hopkins, the proposed siting there, or end of line issues for Eden Prairie and then of course the rail thorn, co-location, relocation of freight. So we had a good conversation about that as well.
You changed the front page of the paper again this weekend.
This morning, then I went over to breakfast for Cornerstone, a fundraiser for Cornerstone and they're doing some good work, you know, we all know that. They serve our community well from their facility in Bloomington, but now the demand is really amping up for them all over the Northwest suburbs. They served, I think they said 700 people in Brooklyn Park last year. So they're trying to move into the northern suburbs. So that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Oh, excuse me. I have one other thing. This was the most important thing, actually. Two weeks ago, we had this discussion and it was a difficult one about whether to proceed with use of eminent domain on the Hooton Cleaners property. And I felt like I didn't make myself as clear as I should have. I know that we worked for six to nine months through staff and other methods of trying to reach out to the parks that own Hootons and try to work out something with them before we decided to make this decision. And when that decision was made two weeks ago, I didn't vote in favor of it, not because I'm not in favor of the use of eminent domain, I just wanted two more weeks to try to talk to them directly. And, and I was afraid that I didn't make it clear that I would be willing to use this tool in the absence of being able to work something out with the parks over that short period of time. That was really an extension of the time that we've been talking to them for six or nine months. So I wanna make it clear that I do support my colleagues on this issue and that we're still hopeful of working something out with the parks. We understand what they'd like to do and we're reaching out to them to try to meet with them and work something out. And so, but just to be clear, I wanted to make sure that folks understood that if necessary, I'm in favor of using this tool as well, so. Thank you. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. A question I've received a couple of times today is, what is the impact, if any, to our government operations due to the federal government shutdown? And we really haven't been able to identify anything. The one thing where I think we will feel it first, if we do feel it, is our Medicare reimbursements for ambulance services. But we just don't have a lot of tight federal connections on the funding side or operations side.
Aren't we waiting for some approval though? Maybe it was France or something, Wayne, that might get slowed down a little bit because of it and we were going out for bids, so something like that?
It might, but we're not, but we're not currently in that process.
Okay.
So we're not experiencing any slowdown. We have an issue that I'm gonna bring to the council on October 14th. Paracel A has maxed its, the number of liquor licenses it can hold under, under our liquor ordinance. We have a cap. And the reason we have a cap is that in the old days, the city had a finite number of liquor licenses that it could, that it could issue. We don't have that finite number anymore. We can issue as many as we want. The state legislature relaxed that a few years ago. So we have, in working with the city attorney, identified the provision in our liquor ordinance... identified the provision in our liquor ordinance that we would need to modify to enable Parisolay or anybody to have a number of liquor licenses more than three. So, I've got that prepared, and I'm proposing to bring that to the council for your consideration on Monday, October 14th.
Can I ask if it's a new restaurant, or expanding liquor into a current one?
It's a new restaurant.
It's the one we approved on, on the National Car site.
Oh, okay.
The Franchu.
They didn't have a, they didn't have a restaurant tour at the time that we approved that restaurant.
They got one now.
They got one now.
A good one.
Okay.
And I saw the menu, and it looks delicious.
Okay.
Just some employee updates. Sherry Engelmann is retiring, is retired. Susan Foss, who is the Assistant Director in our Parks and Rec Department, is gonna be elected into the North Dakota State University Hall of Fame. She's quite, she left quite an athletic career there, and that comes up next week. And finally, we are going to do our annual employee recognition events next week, on the 9th, and one at 11:00, and one at 12:30, and council members are certainly welcome to attend one or both. And that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. The, I was on the council when we had that limited number of liquor licenses available, and the reason we imposed that cap, as I recall, is that we were worried about the big national operators coming in here and kind of overwhelming the local operators. But then when the cap was lifted, all of that's changed. Now, we've got a local operator that's a good operator, that has been stymied by the rules. So, I think it's something that we need to think carefully about, is lifting that cap.
Sure.
Member Bennett, on something else on your list?
Well, we know, we may want to remind people that the next two meetings will take place on Monday evenings, rather than on Tuesday evenings. So, Monday, October 14th, and Monday, November 4th, with Election Day on Tuesday, November 5th.
Good. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Good work tonight. Nice discussions. We stand adjourned.
[inaudible]